Call the April Regular Meeting to Order. Ms. Bowie, will you call the roll?
Good afternoon. Melissa Mason.
Here.
Josie Barnhart.
Here.
Pat Bradford.
I am here.
Judy Justice. Dr. Tim Merrick. David Perry. And Pete Wildebor.
Present.
All right. I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Do I hear us? Is there a second?
Madam Chair, discussion?
I'll second that.
Okay. Ms. Bradford?
I would like to add to the agenda. A discussion of the new information that we have discovered since last meeting on the AI pilot grant.
Second. Okay. Any discussion? Dr. Merrick?
It is my understanding that while we will get $3.2 million given to us, that there's still going to be additional costs from us, be it cameras, be it training, et cetera. And if we're going to have budgetary implications, then we are not allowed to vote on this tonight based on Policy 2330, which says, and I will quote, "Any new policy or budgetary items presented as an addendum to the published agenda are not subject to action at the same meeting." So I would move to amend the motion to push it to information.
Ms. Justice? Thank you, Dr. Merrick. But on top of that, the new information that has been sent...
Point of order. I have amendment. Is there a second?
Oh, a second amendment.
Okay.
Okay, we can, all right. We've already seen the new information, which really isn't new. And I think that all of us up here made our decision on a lot of factors besides that very small part that really didn't even, I'm not even sure, except that they want us to revisit the issue. We voted, we made a decision. Dr. Merrick's point was very useful. But we've got an awful lot of things going on in this district, in our classrooms, in our schools. Safety is our priority. Those of us that voted against it, and I'm gonna be straight about why I did it. I did it because it was not the best company. The money was a huge question. And I know that there's better ways to use that kind of money. It wasn't just given to us. Plus, that company could have just fallen apart the way it was running, being run. So there's many other reasons besides this new information why we voted the way we did. Can we please focus on what's important to the classrooms? Safety's a huge issue. If we want to focus on safety, then focus on what we've got going here and need to look at. There's resources in this community. The county commissioner gave a lot of money, gave lots of money for safety issues. About, well, concerning the shooting at New Hanover, then they took the money away. It's a different county commissioners now. We need to be approaching them. But, you know, stop waste, and I'm gonna say this straight, this is political? Okay.
Please, I will rule that as well received. So let's keep it to the...
Okay, we'll keep it to the facts. The facts are the facts, and we made a decision. And if we're gonna keep going around and around with this, then we're wasting our time. We need to focus on what's going on in the classroom, and we need to focus on safety here in this county.
Fellow board members, I must share that I'm amazed, truly amazed. We received two emails from our newer board members condemning the possibility of revisiting this topic and vote, even though further information has come to light. One of these members recently sent an email stating, and I will quote, that he was pissed because, excuse my language for those in the room, "Because we are not moving to revisit a policy quick enough. We had discussed that policy at length and voted on it less than a year ago. We both recently voted against a motion not to allow revisiting of a suspension policy." And now, again quoting, "We are getting, we are setting a dangerous precedent of relitigating a vote." Which is it? Or is it simply a double standard? Can we revisit and discuss certain votes like a policy the one board member doesn't agree with, but become dangerous if we revisit a vote that he agrees with? What is the will of this board? Oh, and by the way, Robert's Rules of Order clearly allows reconsideration of a vote.
Ms. Bradford?
Well, obviously, there's a lot of new information. It's been told to us by email, it's been told to us by text, it's been told to us by the news, it's been told to us by bloggers, it's been told to us by repost of Facebook and other social media. I want us to have a discussion of all seven of us in front of the public of the new information we've heard, which includes, two members have said in emails that they've had offline conversations with the board attorney about the legality of some of these pieces, but I haven't been privy to those conversations. I would like to ask the board attorneys what information that they have shared with two board members who have referenced it in emails that I haven't been privileged to. In addition, while I was sitting in the meeting last Tuesday, I got an email and a phone call from one of the executives for that company trying to explain some of the reasons, some of the answers to our questions, because I had sent emails all throughout the week. I don't normally check my phone during meetings, but from now on, I probably will, because that information that he had was pertinent to our vote, and we didn't get to share it. In addition, I had asked our safety and security officer, Chuck Silverstein, I'd ask him, would he please speak to us during the meeting and share his opinion about this pilot? And we ran out of time.
Bradford, there's been a point of order, and I will rule that.
What's the point of order, ma'am?
Go ahead.
Point of order is that we are discussing an amendment to the original motion and not the original motion.
And I'm germane to the topic.
Okay. I will rule that well received.
Okay, there is a lot of new information. And we've had limited debate. We closed our meeting rather quickly on that. It was the last thing on our agenda. We had had exhaustive debate on everything else, but it went rather quickly. We did not get to have our say and give all of our reasons. And some of the reasons people gave for the reason they were voting no, those things have been refuted with factual information.
Point of order, madam.
And it needs to be brought out.
Sure.
It needs to be brought out.
Okay.
In a public setting.
Ms. Bradford, thank you. Ms. Barnhart?
Point of order, is there, was there a ruling on the point of order that my colleague just called?
There was no intent. What was the point of order?
The point of order, the second point of order, was the same as the first. We are discussing an amendment and not discussing the original motion.
Ma'am, it was germane, because I would like a vote.
I will rule that not well received. Ms. Barnhart?
Thank you. In regards to the amendment, I do believe that to reconsider this vote is something that is in the best interest of taxpayer dollars. Since the vote last week, more information has come out, including the fact, oh, I will save that for the original motion, my apologies, sir. The AI pilot would allow us to redistribute funds. We are currently in our budget tonight. We are asked to approve the following. $275,000 to monitor security cameras. $685,000 to upgrade new camera systems. We were told this afternoon, one of the budgetary items, if we had funding for, was to purchase Raptor for the entire district. Those three amounts add up to more than $1 million that we are turning around asking the county for, when one week ago, we discussed and dismissed 3.2 from the state. So I think that as far as reconsideration, my other points, I'll wait till the topic at hand. But I think it's a good investment for taxpayer dollars to understand that we rejected 3.2 million from the state a week ago and are turning around asking you as taxpayers for $1 million of funding that we could have allocated and received elsewhere. Thank you.
Mr. Perry?
I apologize for arriving late. I appreciate the new information that came after our previous vote that Ms. Barnhart has provided to us. Some of it regarding cameras, I think we need to look into. But that doesn't mean that it would change my vote in the least. And the fact of the matter is, if you're gonna make a motion to reconsider, it should be coming from one of the four people who voted against it. And I don't see any of them on board. This would not change my vote. My main concern was over not having guardrails in state law regarding some of the more intrusive features of the system. The worries about Ebonon as a company were, in my mind, you know, a little bit disturbing, but not the whole thing.
Related to the amendment, please.
I actually didn't...
The amendment was to put this discussion under information. That was the amendment.
So I would vote against putting it on the agenda.
Point of order?
Mr. Wildebor?
Can we ask our parliamentarian if Mr. Perry's point is correct, that one of the four people that voted against it must be bringing forward the motion to reconsider?
Attorneys, would you advise on that, please?
Yeah. This is a separate session from the last meeting. So actually, this is not a motion to reconsider. It would be a renewed motion. And anybody can bring that. A motion to reconsider has to be in the same session, which generally for us, a meeting is a session. Each, you know, monthly meeting is its own session. But Ms. Bradford actually asked me to look at that issue under Robert's rules shortly after last Tuesday, I think. So yes, any member can bring this up, since it wasn't in the same meeting last week. Since it was in one meeting, it would have had to be somebody on the winning side of the vote to reconsider in that meeting. I hope that answers the question.
Thanks, sir.
All right. So right now, there's a motion on the table, an amendment to move, to put this discussion under information. Ms. Bowie, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Bradford?
No.
Dr. Merrick? Dr. Merrick? Mr. Wildebor?
No.
Mr. Perry?
Point of clarity, what?
This is to put this on, under information. A discussion of this under information.
So, but just to be clear, if I vote yes, I'm voting to put it on the agenda?
Yes.
You're voting for the amendment to put it on the agenda, under information.
And what is, what is the original motion?
We would then have to vote on the amended motion.
No.
They need a, we need an answer from you.
I know.
Ms. Justice?
Yes.
Ms. Barnhart?
No.
And Ms. Mason?
No.
All right. Back to the original motion to put this on the agenda. I assume under old business. Ms. Barnhart?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like for the board to reconsider this vote, and I believe it's in the best interest of taxpayers and the direction of this district. Since the vote last week, more information has come to light, including the fact that our current cameras that we have just recently purchased in the last year already have artificial intelligence installed all to them, on them, and we are actually utilizing some of the formats of artificial intelligence, acknowledging that facial recognition is one of the components that we have turned off currently. This company is a global company that also stores data on the cloud, which was another concern. I think this pilot should be revisited, because if we would be able to allocate funding from the state level to help with the goals of the district to accommodate, one, the monitoring security camera ask that we have in the budget currently for county commissioners; two, the upgraded camera systems that we have in the budget for the county commissioners; three, the Raptor systems that we've been actively seeking to pursue for years that we were just informed of this afternoon by the superintendent. That is over $1 million that we are asking for the county for. When we were discussing the topic at hand, the concerns absolutely warranted, were guardrails in place. We need to discuss this. We need to continue to seek every source of funding we can for our public schools, and this is worthy a discussion for that. Thank you, ma'am.
I would like to speak, since I have not said anything at this point. So as I've shared with board members, I'm deeply concerned about the safety of our staff and students. And while I'm grateful for the funding offered to us and appreciative of the advocacy from our state-level senators, my primary concern remains the well-being of our community and its needs. Having been a mom for the amount of time that I've been, having been a teacher for the amount of time that I've been a teacher, I've learned that there are three sides to every story. There is one side, the other side, and the truth lies somewhere in the middle. So my decision to decline the participation in the AI pilot program wasn't made lightly, and it was based off of information that I'd gathered from various sources prior to the meeting, primarily with the other county. Following the vote, I received an email from Ebonon that suggested there was more to the story, and then later had a conversation with leadership from the company. While all of the things that have been told to me may have been a difference of perspective, it does not change my decision to decline the offer. The conversations I had with multiple individuals alongside my own personal research raised more questions than answers. And while I believe that there is potential for AI to benefit us in the future, I feel it's crucial that we maintain the autonomy to choose both the company and the process through which it is implemented. And I don't know whose hand was up first. Ms. Justice, we'll go with you.
All right. One of the problems with doing this this way is because there's, it's like throw as much stuff as you can get in here and get confused. I just heard information from one of my fellow board members that I haven't had a chance to look at. In fact, some things were thrown at us this afternoon, like in a last-ditch effort, which is what we all do when we're trying to get something through. But, you know, to do it, to try to make a decision now with this last-ditch effort and information thrown out without real confidence that these facts are true, for example, Raptor, that is only one part of this situation. It's also evident. And, you know, I don't want to go through that now, 'cause it'd take forever to try to put the two together and why this is a good thing. But to just pop it up like this now, we made a decision. I have investigated like Ms. Mason has, and I do not feel comfortable with this company for a lot of reasons that we could go on and on and on about.
I'm gonna go this side, and do, Mr. Wildebor?
I just want to remind everybody that we did sit down with every single principal in New Hanover County. My group, my colleague to my left and I were with one group. We were divided up so that we were not breaking any rules. But our group, 100% of the folks were asked, and 100% of the folks said that they 100% wanted this. And father, you know, additional discussions with the other groups, this board members from other, you know, that were in charge or were with the other group, not charged, but it sounds to me like 100% of our folks that are in the classrooms, in the schools, think that this is a good way to keep our students safe. None of us, well, there may be one of us that is a expert in web design, web, et cetera. I could say, you know, I'm a former principal. I'm not a person that is a 100% have all the knowledge about this. But our teachers, our principals, who are the leaders of our schools, all felt like this is something that they wanted to do to keep our kids safe. So, you know, we heard the summertime, what's the thing? Well, yeah, anyway. Our summertime survey, there we go, big word I couldn't come up with. And one of the biggest things we heard was that we don't listen to people in the schools. We don't listen to the teachers. We don't listen to the principals. Well, the principals are united in wanting this, at least in my opinion. And I think that at some point, we need to listen to them. Thank you.
I'm gonna go over here and then come back over there. Mr. Perry?
Yes, I don't want to repeat my previous comments. That is the main reason I was voting no on this. I guess I voted yes on the amendment, but I'm voting no on this. But I did want to address one issue that Ms. Barnhart brought up. I certainly...
So just so you know, we do not mention names. We mention the colleague to our left, just so you know. Was that your...
That was it.
Thank you. In regards to the idea that somehow we could have diverted, you know, $1 or $2 million of the Street 0.2 million dollar grant towards use of cameras, and that somehow we are cheating the taxpayers of New Hanover County, we simply are not. The state statute explicitly says that the sum of money is supposed to be used for the implementation of an AI system that works into existing cameras and intercoms.
This sounds like a discussion for the agenda item at hand.
So I just want to get that out of my, out of our chest. I guess we have to...
That is well received. So if you could keep it germane to the adding of, adding this topic to the agenda.
So I don't believe this, we, I think we would have been going down an illegal path had we tried to do that. Thank you.
Okay. I believe, Dr. Merrick, and then Ms. Bradford?
I believe strongly that all seven of us want to keep our kids safe. I really do not believe that any of us have any other ulterior motives. Sometimes we differ on technique. I also believe that all of our principals want to keep our children safe. From my discussions with different principals, they would be happy for anything that would make their life easier. And let's face it, they've got a lot to do. And so if there's a possibility that someone, they didn't have to watch those cameras themselves, they're like, oh, yeah, heck, yes. In fact, that's even what they told us. But $3.2 million is enough to put a teacher's aid in every single school in our district. And what we need is people and not machines to help keep our schools safe.
All right. Ms. Bradford, if you could close us out, please?
Madam Chair, I would make the clarification of the fact that the $3 million was offered to us as a grant pilot program to enhance one aspect of our security. It is not available for anything else, nada. We will have to go next week and ask the county to give us about $1 million to do some of the stuff that this program would have funded. You have to understand that. So when the county commission probably will say no to that request, that it was because we refused state money to implement something that we are going to the county to ask them for local tax dollars to implement. That's a pretty big fact. It wasn't brought out in the discussion last week. There's a lot of facts out here that weren't brought out in our discussion, which is why I feel that we should have it on the agenda and have a robust discussion either this week or another week. I had asked our head of security and safety. We would think that that one expert in the entire school district, his opinion would have been brought to our board as a full board. We're not allowed to meet in groups of more than three and have any discussion. So we haven't had a group discussion. We're supposed to have it here in front of you so that you're right along with us in every decision we make. That hasn't happened. Mr. Silverstein has not spoken to us. I don't know exactly what he's gonna say, but I want to hear his opinion. I've talked to teachers. I've talked to lots of people, but I haven't shared that with the whole board because I can't. I'm not on social media, and I'm not getting involved in these tit-for-tat emails back and forth. I want to share it publicly so that you know the decision I make is an informed decision that is putting our children's safety and our staff members' safety first. We constantly have heard from staff that we do not value their opinion. And yet, here we are, seven people saying, "I don't care what the staff says. I know more than they do, and this is what I want." Now, you should know that we have a 34-page report from the North Carolina Generative AI Implementation Recommendations and Considerations for Pre-K Through 13 from public schools, from our state superintendent, Mo Green. This came out in January. We have AI in our schools now. They're wanting to add generative AI. You should be wanting us to meet about that rather than talk to us about a system that's just using the same AI that's in your car. And it's not, it's not the fearsome thing that you're thinking, but we haven't had that discussion. We've gotten a lot more facts from the company since then. And I want to have that discussion so that you know, at least if we do turn down $3.2 million and the county says, "No, no more money for cameras." Now, our superintendent arranged for all board members to go out to two schools and see their camera system. I was the only board member who took opportunity to do that little field trip. And I went to a school that had a good camera system, and I went to a field trip that they did it at one school and the school, New Hanover, they remoted in. So there is a, what's that word, discrimination going on between the safety that we offer in our schools? And yet, we have five schools with newer systems. That means 40 of our schools don't. How do we say, "This school doesn't get a good camera system, but this one's already got it"? How do we deal with that discrimination? How do we keep our kids safe under those terms? I just want to have a full board discussion. Whatever the board decides, I will go along with, but we have not had this discussion.
All right. Ms. Bowie, will you call the roll?
Mr. Perry?
Sorry. The motion is to add AI discussion to, the AI pilot discussion to the agenda.
No.
Ms. Justice?
No.
Ms. Bradford?
Yes.
Dr. Merrick?
No.
Mr. Wildebor?
I think, as I said when I was the chair, I think every topic should be discussed. So I say yes.
Ms. Barnhart?
Yes.
And Ms. Mason?
No. That does not pass. I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second. All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
That passes six to one.
I'm sorry, no.
Oh, five to two. Next, we will have the invocation given by Reverend Jamie Thompson of Anchor Church of Wilmington, followed by the presentation of colors by the Ashley High School NJROTC, under the direction of Lieutenant Colonel Robert Raider and Master Chief Matthew Deschamps and Principal Michael Perez, and the National Anthem by Jonathan King and Miranda Palisi, band students at Laney High, under the direction of Bob Pearson with Danny Little as principal. And Dr. Merrick will do the pledge. So all of that, we'll start with the invocation. It is, it's a lot.
Gracious and loving God, we need your presence now. We come before you today asking for hearts that might be open to wisdom, justice, and compassion. You have called us to be stewards of the gifts entrusted to us, and among the greatest of these are the children in our schools. Center us on that in this moment, O God. Guide our deliberations tonight, that we might seek the common good of all students. Those who excel and those who struggle. Those who are seen and those who are often overlooked. May we remember the vulnerable, and especially those who face obstacles beyond the classroom that defy our comprehension. Give us courage to make decisions that uphold fairness and dignity for all children, that the sacred worth of every child might be centered in every moment. Grant us patience and disagreement, clarity and vision, and a shared commitment to justice. Let our work be a reflection of your love, so that our schools may be places of hope, opportunity, and belonging for all. In your holy name, we pray. Amen. In your holy name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If I could have all of the students that were just up here come back and introduce yourselves, that would be awesome. So my musicians and the ROTC. I don't know if they could hear me. They did hear me. I'm holding it close. I need all the students that were just out here. Do I have to chase them? Do I have to go get them? They're coming. Awesome. Here they are. Just going to have all of you introduce yourselves real quick.
My name is Sadie Ingram. I'm a junior.
My name is Reese Ingram. I'm a sophomore.
I'm Rosa McIntosh, sophomore.
My name is Thomas Durant. I'm a sophomore too.
My name is Mitchell Rayne. I'm a junior.
Colanda Bravo, junior.
My name is Miguel Damien Garcia, a freshman.
My name is Miranda Palisi. I'm a senior.
And my name is Jonathan King. I'm a junior.
Thank you guys so much. All right. I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
These are Februaries.
These are Februaries, yes. All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? That passes seven to zero. Continuing on to recognitions. Good evening. As always, this is my favorite part of the evening. Let me start with our first recognition this evening. Please join us in celebrating a remarkable achievement that speaks to skill and strategy, but also to dedication, perseverance, and leadership. It is with great pride that we recognize Coach Adrian Gale, varsity women's basketball coach at Ashley High School for achieving her 350th career win this February. Come on, Gale. Coach Gale has been with the Screaming Eagles since the school opened in 2001, creating victories and memories that last a lifetime. This milestone is more than a number, but represents the countless hours of hard work, planning, and unwavering commitment. It is a testament to her relentless pursuit of excellence and ability to lift others up along the way. Coach Gale is best known for her ability to lead teams who grow not only as competitors, but as individuals who understand the values of teamwork, discipline, and resilience. Coach Gale, we honor and admire all of your wins, with your greatest win being building such a memorable legacy that has inspired your players in countless ways throughout the years. Thank you very much. And board members, please come on down. All right, another round of applause. All right, yep, you know the drill. Don't go anywhere. All right, next we would like to celebrate a parent of a ninth-grade student at Hogard High School for her outstanding dedication to gifted education. Please welcome Kara Johnson for achieving the 2025 NCAGT James J. Gallagher Advocacy Award. Ms. Johnson was recognized at the state level for this award for not only supporting her own child, but tirelessly working to support gifted education so that it received the attention, resources, and recognition that it deserves. As the Gifted Advisory Council Chairperson, Ms. Johnson helped to shape policy, raise awareness of unique needs of gifted students, and ensure that they are not overlooked. Her commitment demonstrates the importance of collaboration between educators, families, and students. Congratulations on this incredible recognition. We're so thankful that you have done for all the things you've done for our school and community. All right, let us now celebrate the remarkable achievement of a senior at Hogard High School who has gone above and beyond in shaping the lives of others. The North Carolina Association for the Gifted and Talented recognized Houston Sutton for the 2025 Leadership Through Service Award for his incredible efforts in building the AIG Mentorship Program. This program is a student-led initiative that pairs high-achieving high school students with elementary and middle school students to help offer them guidance and support. Houston shared about this mentorship program with the Gifted Advisory Council, which secured a donation to provide games and activities to promote critical thinking skills. Houston is committed to growing the AIG Mentorship Program and we are excited to see all of the ways it helps students both inside and outside the classroom. Thank you for empowering your peers to be leaders and for setting up the next generation for success. Houston Sutton. Thank you. All right, next we're going to recognize the outstanding leadership of New Hanover High School junior Corina Basta for being named the 2026 NC Youth and Government Lieutenant Governor. So she was awarded in the YMCA Youth and Government. It's a civics program and it prepares high school students for future leadership. So Corina created a successful campaign and speeches to achieve the role of Lieutenant Governor. In this position, she's going to be able to collaborate with other student leaders from across the state to learn about legislative and judicial processes as well as further develop her leadership skills. Corina has demonstrated incredible academic success as a student in Lyceum Program. Also, she's the captain of the tennis team. She's vice president of the New Hanover High School Beta Club and a Youth and Government Delegation leader. Her experience in these leadership roles and her volunteer work, she exemplifies her commitment to serving others. We are thrilled to see all the ways she uplifts our community and state as Lieutenant Governor. All right, so while she's grabbing those, I'm going to start. All right, so we want to share about one of the highest honors that our student singers can achieve. With great pride and excitement, we want to celebrate the students who have been selected to be a part of the NC Honors Chorus. So it's for elementary, middle, and high school. Being chosen for this honor is a recognition of their vocal talent, their commitment to their craft, and their ability to rise to the challenge. Please welcome the following students and teachers to the stage. From Cottington Elementary, Gabriella DiMarco, Elise Ojeda, and Sutton Paige Whitlock. Not with us tonight is their teacher, Dr. Amanda Hoke, and another student, Casey Garrus. Come on up. All right. From Holly Tree Elementary, music teacher Susan Gardner. Her student Allison Ripley was not able to join us this evening. However, we're going to move on to Bellamy. All right, just want to make sure before we move on. All right, so Ms. Emily Dugans, Mia Masquera Palacio, and Amelia Sanchez. And Mr. Drew Wright and students Tal Yin and Tilden Lucas Todd were not able to join us this evening. So come on down, Bellamy Elementary. They're not here, but that's okay. That's okay. We have a lot. All right, so for our middle school honors chorus. See, I think we knew in advance how this was going to play out. All right, so for our middle school honors chorus, we have Ms. Jamie Wood and her students Elijah Greason, Isaiah McDowell, Mia Gonzalez, and Lila Campbell from Myrtle Grove Middle. Thank you. Perfect. Not able to join us this evening are Ms. Hannah James and her student Jose Chirinos Mantelvan from New Hanover High School, but they were also honored this evening, unfortunately unable to attend. All right, next but not least, we have our State Employee Credit Union Scholarship recipients. Tonight, we want to spend a little bit of time celebrating students in our district who have earned the prestigious State Employees Credit Union Foundation People Helping People Scholarship. This scholarship focuses on academic achievement, but also recognizes leadership, integrity, and community involvement. Each senior is eligible for $10,000 payable at $1,250 per semester for up to eight consecutive semesters to one of 16 constituent campuses of the University of North Carolina system. Please welcome Ella Ensign from Laney High School. Anna King from Southeast Technical High School. Lila Furman from Hogard High School. Sierra Roseborough from Isaac Bear. And unfortunately, we have a couple of recipients unable to join us. Owen Alfred from New Hanover High, Jada Dorsey from Wex, and Jayden Leerto from Ashley High School. I'd also like to give our great appreciation to Mr. Dustin Adams, Senior VP of NC State Employees Credit Union. Please, please. All right. So in New Hanover County Schools, we celebrate the student, staff, and volunteers who demonstrate the character that makes our schools positive, safe, and respectful. For this month's Character in Action Award, we celebrate the lifesaving action of first-grade teacher Christian Hope from Sunset Park Elementary School. Mrs. Hope received CPR training as a former physical education teacher and was able to use this training to respond to a family member in crisis until medical help was able to arrive. In the moment when seconds mattered, Mrs. Hope stayed focused, putting her training and instincts to use in order to protect someone that she cared deeply about. She shows us that she is the best possible role model because she is someone who always steps up to do what is right. We're so thankful that she used her knowledge, quick thinking, and compassion to jump into necessary action. We honor her courage and care to save a life. She is truly a hero. As an educator, she makes more than a living. She makes a difference. And we'd love to show her video while she receives her award.
How many of you guys can you tell us? You guys do?
Well, I know.
Because a couple weeks ago, she had someone get really, really sick. And she helped save their life until the doctor could get there. I'm just trying to recognize folks who show good care because being a good person is as important as being a good person. And the fact that there's someone in the world who is still in this world because of you saved a life. I'm so pleased that you're there and so pleased that you had the training that I set in. It's definitely been saving people for you to every day. So I just wanted to tell you how impressed you were and thank you for today.
We appreciate the time you've offered us for our children, for our schools, for the communities, for our community.
All right, am I missing Ms. Allen? Let you go. I knew you were here somewhere. Oh, please. And this concludes recognitions for the evening. Thank you.
All right, moving on, we're going to go to student voice.
Good afternoon, everyone, and thank you for your time today. My name is Maya Roseborough. I'm currently a senior at Isaac I'm currently a senior at Isaac Bear Early College. I am hoping to go to either the Massachusetts Institute of Technology or Johns Hopkins for my undergrad, but thank you, I'm happy to be here today.
I can't beat that one, but my name is Lillian Rumpel, and I am a senior at New Hanover High School, and I will be attending Chapel Hill next year.
Hello, my name is Jack Scherer. I am a senior at Hogard High School, and I will be at the new Chapel Hill for a joint degree program with Humboldt University in Berlin.
Hello, my name is Diane Perez Peralta, and I'm a junior at Isaac Bear.
Hey, my name is Abby McCumbie, and I'm a junior at Ashley High School.
We're happy to be here today, and today we wanted to acknowledge the incredibly beneficial and often overlooked staff in our county. I'm recognizing Ms. Johnson, an outstanding custodian at Isaac Bear. Words alone can't do her justice for how amazing she is, but I'll do my best. Every time I return to the Isaac Bear Building, she greets me with a smile and takes the time to ask about my latest updates and accomplishments, and I can tell she genuinely cares about how my day is going. Her kindness and presence makes an absolute difference in our Isaac Bear community.
We also want to take a moment to recognize the fantastic efforts of our AIG counselors. When we spoke with Student Ambassador Team about what our county has been doing well, both myself and others consistently highlighted the exceptional work of the AIG office. They have been instrumental in ensuring that seniors have access to all available resources to help pay for college. The AIG counselors do this by regularly updating students through email about local scholarships and their deadlines, as well as assisting seniors with the application process to help them access funding within our community.
The AIG counselors have also played a key role in connecting students with valuable opportunities in our community. For instance, programs such as Auxiliary Girls State, District Attorney Leadership Academy, and Rotary Youth Leadership Academy have been supported and promoted by the AIG office. I personally participated in all of these programs, and they have provided me with valuable life experiences and lasting connections. These opportunities not only help students grow, but they give them a competitive edge when applying to colleges.
Joseph, an ambassador that unfortunately couldn't make it today, wanted to shout out his AIG counselor, Ms. Crudelli. He says she's helpful to students that are striving towards challenging themselves with AP and honors classes. She's very knowledgeable and will always keep you on the right track for success. She also sends out a weekly email to AIG students about service and scholarship opportunities, which are immensely invaluable to students who are seeking to better themselves even more. Ms. Crudelli really helps eliminate a lot of stress when it comes to choosing what classes to take, and because of this, she is always available to guide him on his right path. Thank you, Joseph.
Thank you for taking the time to celebrate the accomplishments of our schools this past month. Over the last month, the Student Ambassador Team has been hard at work developing the collective. A series of videos designed to raise awareness about the various resources available to students within New Hanover County. These videos can be found on YouTube and the New Hanover County Instagram page where they highlight the unique aspects of our schools.
As we continue to reimagine the collective, we've made some adjustments to our process, such as having ambassadors record and edit their videos independently. This change has helped speed up the delivery of information, allowing us to share important content with students more effectively. We are producing and editing our first video to add to the collective. This video features advice on transitioning to high school, how to choose between specialty programs, and how to balance additional activities such as sports and extracurriculars in high school.
Thank you for your time today. We're super excited to present our accomplishments and recent updates for the Student Ambassador Team.
Thank you. Ms. Barnhart?
I just want to say congratulations, and I know the second one who talked, she said, "It's not as good." It is as good, so you should be proud of yourself for getting in and what your future holds, so good job.
Mr. Wildabour?
I do want to congratulate everyone that is moving on to a college. That's awesome. Those that are juniors, looking forward to hearing about you guys next year. But you did mention a video. Is there a possibility that we could get a chance to see that video? Okay, we'd love to do that. Can you step back up to the mic and say that so that everybody can hear that?
Everybody can hear it.
All right, I don't know about you, but I'm struggling to hear that. Yeah, well, exactly.
Yeah, so last year, when we filmed these videos, we filmed them in the filming office right over here, but we kind of wanted to get our videos out as quickly as possible, so we're having ambassadors film them themselves, and we will share it to the communications team, which will post it on the New Hanover County Instagram page as well as the YouTube page.
And if you wouldn't mind, we'd love to show it here so that we can showcase it to everybody and let everybody see.
Perfect, I'll let you know when it gets released.
Perfect, thank you.
Because I'm working on editing it tonight, so thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right, do we have a teacher here for Teacher Voice? We do.
Good evening, members of the school board. My name is Taylor Henderson, and I'm a science and math teacher at New Hanover High School, where I had the honor of serving as the 2023 Teacher of the Year. I'd like to thank you all for this platform and the opportunity to share about a hidden gem right here in our district called the RISE Program. RISE, which stands for Relationships Inspire Student Empowerment, is an intervention program serving students with intense academic and behavior needs in a small and separate setting. This innovative program was born out of a need for change and is based on current research such as trauma-informed, restorative practices, and crisis prevention. Designed to support EC future-ready students, the program has successfully addressed issues like chronic absenteeism, low academic performance, student safety, family involvement, and community partnerships. With experience spanning public, private, and alternative schools, I have always asked, "How do we propel our most disenfranchised learners to success? And can we teach them in a way that restores their dignity and enables them to feel like assets to their school, community, and the world?" My work in alternative education showed the impact of a model that truly engages students. The need for this approach was evident at New Hanover, where EC intense behavior support students were disengaged and underserved academically. I was told that I would have my slides available, so I'm not sure if we have those, but data shows that in the old model, only 36% of IBS students passed Math 1, only 46% of IBS students passed English 1, and students were suspended 153 days of the school year. There was a clear need for change. In the RISE Program, on average, 87% of our students passed Math 1, 75% of students passed English 1, and the days suspended drops to 78 days after only one year in the program. Our mission is to empower students to know that they are seen and have advocates that fight for their personal and academic growth. We team-teach so that students receive a robust cross-curricular education with rigor and high levels of support, and we push into the local community to increase their social skills, enhance student engagement, and provide opportunities for students to see their future selves. We are providing EC students with opportunities that they weren't getting in other settings. We believe that student empowerment comes from fostering relationships, understanding stories, and inspiring hope. There are currently 52 students in the RISE Program at New Hanover High School. The RISE Team consists of two EC teachers, ECTAs, and a content teacher. We work together to deliver future-ready course-of-study math, science, and social skills curriculum with targeted emotional, social, and academic learning activities embedded that are aimed at developing the skills necessary to build healthy relationships, deal with adversity, and allow for increased focus and academic success. We do so in smaller class sizes that are providing EC services as well as co-taught year-long courses. One of the biggest benefits is that weekly, students in the RISE Program have the opportunity to work with community partners, where they are truly building relationships that inspire and empower them. For example, our SROs, admin teams, school counselors, social workers, the What Clinic, and school-based support all contribute to building positive relationships. We also partner with organizations outside our school, like Channel by Live Oak Bank, UNCW men's basketball, our local fire department, the aquarium, pre-eds, vocational rehab, Kids Making It, Just Cut It, Habitat for Humanity, and the other organizations that were listed on my slide. In fact, this Friday, our RISE students will visit the offices of the architectural team working on New Hanover High School to present their Portrait of a Graduate projects. For this project, students identified a need within their school or community, such as community park or an updated lunchroom space, then researched, collaborated, and designed a space that meets those needs using mathematical functions. It's an incredible opportunity for our students to contribute their ideas and be a part of the legacy of redesigning New Hanover High School. In RISE, we follow a growth model, helping students build school and organizational skills in ninth grade, career readiness in 10th, life skills in 11th, and mentorship in 12th. In order to understand the impact that this program is having on students, we chose to study two strands of data. First, comparing data such as suspensions, attendance, and graduation rates from IBS students in the previous model to students in RISE. And second, looking at where students were before RISE versus during RISE in terms of Math 1 EOC scores, grades, behavior incidents, attendance, and graduation rates. For example, after one year in RISE, we see a 46% decrease in behavior incidents, an additional 35% decrease in RISE Year 2, an additional 50% in RISE 11, and, I'm so happy to report, students in RISE 12 have had zero behavior incidents. Thank you, thank you. In the interest of time, I've summarized some more of the data. RISE students on average score 6.4 points higher on their Math 1 EOC. Oh, we're on Slide 11. Thank you. 6.4 points higher on their Math 1 EOC than their projected... The next Slide 11. Thank you. With some students earning as much as 25 to 35 points of growth, so 87% of our students show growth on the Math 1 EOC. While the data shows a 37% increase in absences, we noticed a really interesting trend. Many students were attending their RISE classes but skipping their other classes, so I hope to explore this further and uncover the root cause of that trend. Students increased their English class grades by eight points and sustained that growth throughout high school. Next slide, please. Not only have we partnered with other IBS programs here in our district, but my team and I have had the opportunity to present RISE at the National Dropout Prevention Conference, as well as the North Carolina DPI 72nd Conference for Exceptional Children, UNCW, Open Way Learning, Pitt County District Leaders, and Mooresville Graded School District, and others. As a champion for experiential education and student success regardless of their background or experience, I wanted to showcase to you how my colleagues and I have worked tirelessly to create a program that is growing students and demonstrating the idea that all learners have the potential to succeed. Next slide. I'd like to leave you with some quotes from my students in the RISE Program. "You feel powerful, like you're wanted or needed or something. That's how the RISE Program makes you feel. I haven't gotten in trouble as much because I have settled down. Being in the RISE Program, I realize I am becoming a better person and I am successful. Before I was in the RISE Program, I would just suffer in silence, but the RISE Program has taught me how to speak up." Next slide, please. As you can see, there is great evidence of its success, and I'd be delighted to talk with anyone who is interested about using RISE or the principles and pillars of RISE to meet some of the needs that we are facing in education. In addition, I'd like to personally invite any district leaders and members of the board to come spend a day with us, hang out with the kids, and meet with me and the RISE Team to learn more. In a recent email, Dr. Barnes mentioned that "as educators, we seek justice, love mercy, and walk humbly. I'm honored to do just that every day through the RISE Program." Thank you.
Board members? Ms. Barnhart?
I want to say thank you. I know myself and Ms. Mason, we have come in all day and spirit with you. To be able to talk about the unique needs and be responsive in a different format is something that is so innovative, and we are so grateful for you and your team of people because sometimes it's a tough day, but sometimes it's really rewarding, and I will happily come and look at their projects again. I loved being a part of that and just encouragement and walking through the process, so we're here to support you, and we appreciate what you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your support.
Mr. Wildabour?
All I can say is wow, wow, wow. You are exactly what we need as a teacher, as a teacher leader, so thank you for what you do. You know, your students, 0% discipline problems. Wow.
Dr. Merrick?
Thank you so much. Thank you, I appreciate that. Thank you.
You know, a lot of times, we think about, what do we want to celebrate in our school system? And when I hear you speak to us, these are the programs that just give us hope, and we recognize how much we can do. Thank you so much for what you're doing. We know that a lot of the behavior issues come about because of ACEs, and I heard you say the word "relationship" about 100 times in there. And we know that PACES, which is the sort of the trying to get around ACEs, is all based on relationships, and I just love what you're doing. Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Ms. Bradford?
I just want to add my congratulations and my thanks for what you're doing, to what the other board members have said. We are just so proud of what you're doing. Keep it up.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Ms. Justice?
This is wonderful. I love seeing programs like this, and apparently all of us do. This is what schools are about. Can I ask you, is this only in New Hanover High School?
Currently, yes, ma'am.
And where did it originate?
New Hanover High School.
You guys came up with the program yourselves and put it in place?
Yes, ma'am. So I taught previously at alternative schools, and when I got to New Hanover, there were a lot of staff that were kind of asking that same question, and so we sort of just put our strengths together and asked Mr. Sutton and our EC department chair, who's here, Evan Kason, and we were like, "Hey, this sounds crazy, but can we try it?" And they said yes, and we were just excited that it's been successful, so.
Well, thank you, and everybody involved, and the students especially, because they're definitely doing the work. Good.
Right, exactly.
Mr. Perry?
I just thank you for everything that you've done, and great innovation is what I'd like to see. And I'm guessing that probably some of the other high schools are gonna be giving you a call here soon.
Thank you so much, I appreciate it.
And I'll close this out, but thank you so much for letting Ms. Barnhart and I come in last year and getting to see the start of the projects that they had, and the ideas that these students had were phenomenal and innovative and creative, and then to finally go to watch them present a Portrait of a Graduate, to see start to finish, it was really fantastic. So they're doing some great work, so if any board member has not been there, definitely go. But thank you so much.
Thank you so much, I appreciate it. Thank you.
All right, continuing on to the superintendent's report.
Taylor, do you want to read this? You'd do a better job than me. All right, good evening, everyone. I want to take a brief moment to recognize and express my deepest gratitude to Ms. Sutton and the Finance Department, to the Board, and everyone for their tireless dedication and hard work on finalizing this next school year's budget. It's not an easy process, but thanks to everyone's efforts, we are well ahead of schedule. We are going to be delivering our budget to our county commissioners with our asks and requests almost two months earlier than it was done last year, so thank you again, Ms. Sutton. Thanks to everybody, we've tried to do a job making this complex budget process more transparent and understandable for all, ensuring that our district continues to effectively allocate resources to meet our needs. In addition, myself, some board members, some teachers, and some students are going back to Raleigh for another visit next week to advocate for adjustments to the allotment schedule and formula to address critical personnel needs in our district. So we remain committed to addressing any questions or concerns regarding the budget that you have. With feedback from our families, staff, board members, and community stakeholders, we've identified key areas of need and incorporated possible solutions into our financial planning for next year via our budget superintendent budget priorities. Our goal is to strengthen our district and enhance the educational experience for every student. Yesterday, I see some people in the crowd, we had the pleasure of welcoming Mo Green, North Carolina State Superintendent, to our district. His visit showed great collaboration, allowing us not only to identify common challenges faced by districts across the state, but also helped develop solutions. We also discussed our legislative priorities, which we hope will serve as a roadmap for future improvements and effective implementation across the region and state. All right, now... All right, now the fun stuff. A huge shout out to New Hanover High School's men's varsity basketball team and the... Go ahead, get out of your system. And the Hoggard Women's Varsity Basketball Team for making it to the final... For making it to the final four of the NCHSAA FA Regional Championship. Your hard work and dedication makes us proud. We also want to congratulate Trey Moore, our 2025 NHCS NCAT CTE Teacher of the Year. Thank you for your dedication to career in technical education and for inspiring students every day. And I want to also recognize that we had a Rookie Teacher of the Year finalist, a Teacher of the Year finalist, and now a CTE of the Year award winner. So, congratulations to everyone. If you are out there and would like to be more like Taylor, for any aspiring educators, the Board of Education's Student Scholarship for Future Teacher Application deadline is April 22nd. This scholarship will award four recipients up to $28,000 each toward their education at a North Carolina community college, college, or university. All eligible students are encouraged to apply. Details are on our website and on our social media. All right, upcoming events. We have a lot of summer camp availability and opportunities for folks. Stay tuned and follow us on social media for details and exciting opportunities for students this summer. April, April 1st, believe it or not, we extend our heartfelt thanks to all military families for their service and their sacrifice. On April 15th, we encourage everyone to wear purple and show your support for military children and their families, as April is month of the military child. April is also National Occupational Therapy Month. We deeply appreciate the hard work of our occupational therapists who support our students every day. And I didn't write this, but last but not least, a personal favorite, apparently April 19th is National Husband Appreciation Day. So, I called your wife and let her know. All right, they'll give you a day for anything, won't they? All right, it's hard to believe, but we are approaching the final quarter of the school year. As we reflect on the progress we've made, and before we power through the rest of the school year, let us not forget, folks, spring break is just a week away. Everybody, take a breath and hang on. It's right around the corner. This is a perfect time to hit pause. I would encourage everyone to recharge and enjoy some well-deserved rest. Whether you're traveling, spending time with loved ones, or simply catching up on sleep, take this time to relax. And now, I'd like to encourage everyone to check out our Quarter in Review video highlighting the incredible work that's happening across our schools. If you'd like to know more about some of the things we talked about, there's a handout in the back over there on the back table with links and things you can follow. Thank you.
All right. Now, for the Board Chair report. I want to start off, there's a lot of things that apparently happened in April. April begins National Autism Acceptance Month. As someone who knows and loves someone with autism, this month holds a special place in my heart. The Board had an eventful and busy productive month in March. While I was unable to make special visits to schools, I had the opportunity to attend various school events where I witnessed the remarkable talents of our staff and students. The month began with read aloud sessions at Wrightsville Beach Elementary and several other schools. It was heartening to see a diverse group of individuals, including board members, commissioners, and other community and government officials join in. This was a wonderful way to promote a love of reading among our students. The Board also engaged in insightful discussions with principals, particularly regarding cellphone policies and the potential for an AI pilot program. We're grateful for their time and valuable feedback they provided. The budget was a major topic of discussion this month, and I'm pleased with the productive conversations we've had. We're especially appreciative of the commissioners who took the time to meet with us and discuss the district's needs in depth. Additionally, the Board held a work session to discuss call to audience and various committees. This session proved productive and may offer solutions to lighten the workload for both staff and board members, all while ensuring the district continues to operate smoothly. On a lighter note, if you were unable to attend the best foot-forward event at the beginning of February, I highly recommend you mark it on your calendar for next year. I didn't go last year. I wish I had. It was an incredible showcase of the extraordinary talent we have within our county, from steel drum performances, which was phenomenal, to singing, dancing, acting, and more. It was an evening of unparalleled entertainment. The Board also hosted a town hall meeting where we heard from members of the community about their thoughts on the AI pilot, and we were grateful to have Evan present to share insights and answer questions. Thank you to all who attended and contributed to the conversation. To close out the month, Porter's Neck Elementary hosted a Leader in Me showcase, where attendees had the chance to see student leadership in action. Students led conferences, shared object lessons about the seven habits, performed skits, guided tours of the school, and even invited adults to participate in a fun game of Are You Smarter Than a Pelican? A big thank you to the staff and students who orchestrated such a thoughtful and engaging morning. I look forward to visiting more schools this month, and wish everyone a restful and well-deserved spring break. And this concludes my report. And now, I will turn the mic over to Vice Chair Ms. Barnhart to do the call to audience. Thank you, Madam Chair. First up, we have Jackie Delazio. Jackie? Oh. All right, next is NC Case.
Good evening. How's everyone doing? I just want to preface this with, if I'm disrupted, I'd like the clock to be stopped until I'm no longer disrupted. Thank you. I don't... I'm kind of at a loss where to start, and it's not going to be a popular view with half the room, and that's too bad. When you partner with GLSEN to hold a direct action protest at our school board, knowing full well that GLSEN is an organization along with the Trevor Project and GLAD that has contributed to the malfeasance that we have seen all across the country, this doesn't make me a fascist because I want to affirm reality, okay? At the end of the day... You can calm down. At the end of the day, you talk about marginalization and exploitation and colonization. These are words that I hear from you all the time online. And I've logged for the last three hours, over two thousand... Last three years, over 2,000 hours, listening to the radical left and listening to the queer Marxist political faction tell us their plans. It's not conservative commentary. I've heard it directly from them. Directly from them. I can name them. Who in the room? Raise your hand if you know who Sophie Lewis is, who authored the book Social Reproduction Theory.
Can you please pause the time? I need you all to sit down, please. Please sit down. Thank you. You may continue.
Marginalization, exploitation, and colonization. Well, the kids are being marginalized, they're being exploited, and you're colonizing their bodies by giving them cross-sex hormones, puberty blockers, and eventually surgery. Social transition leads to medicalization almost 100% of the time. So, why would you be promoting it in a state where it is not legalized unless the doctors themselves are engaging in medical fraud, as Dr. Etan Heim shared on D-Trans Awareness Day in DC? We're not going to tolerate it, and if you continue to do it, you have to deal with me.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Alyssa Uggendelli?
Last month, on March 14th, Dr. Barnes wrote a letter to New Hanover County School Community. It began, "As we continue to share our mission of providing the best possible education for our students, I want to express my gratitude for your ongoing support. Our schools are more than just buildings. They are spaces where young minds grow, explore, and develop into thoughtful, capable, and compassionate adults. So, I wonder, how does suspending a five-year-old provide them with the best possible education? How does suspending a six-year-old help with their young minds' growth? And how does suspending a seven-year-old help them develop into thoughtful, capable, compassionate adults?" The letter goes on to say, "Our classroom should be a place where all students feel safe, supported, and free to learn without unnecessary distractions. By the phrase 'all students,' do you mean the children who follow the rules and the ones that need help and support to follow the rules? Article 1, Section 15 of North Carolina Constitution states, 'The people have the right to the privilege of education, and it is the duty of the state to guard and maintain that right.'" Uphold that right for five, six, seven-year-olds. Provide them with the help and support they deserve. Keep them in school where they can learn and thrive. Thank you.
Maryland Education Code, Section 7-305.1, states, "A student enrolled in a public pre-kindergarten program, kindergarten, first grade or second grade, may not be suspended or expelled from school." It goes on to say that pre-K through second-grade children may only be expelled if it's required by federal law. And, "They may be suspended for not more than five days if the school administration, in consultation with a school psychologist or other mental health professional, determines that there is an imminent threat of serious harm to other students or staff that cannot be reduced or eliminated through interventions and support." Now, those five or up to five days out of school are not a punishment in the state of Maryland, but an opportunity for an administrator with a mental health professional to make plans to address a child's serious mental health condition. And it goes on to state, "The school shall provide intervention and support to address the student's behavior if the student is disruptive to the school environment or commits an act that would be considered an offense subject to suspension but for the student's grade." So, imagine if all of our five, six, and seven-year-olds in our schools received the interventions and support that they needed to address their behavior instead of being kicked out of school. Stop punishing our youngest learners and end all K-2 suspensions. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. DeAndre Cornife? I don't know if I'm saying that last name right. Is it Cornife? Is that how you say the last name? Could you say that one more time for me so I know? Is it Cornife? How do you say the last name?
Cornife.
Okay, thank you.
Hi. On February 7th, I tagged every member of the New Hanover County School Board on a Facebook post about Optimism Oasis, wanting the New Hanover County Schools to practically give it land that belongs to Johnson Pre-K Elementary School, so that Optimism Oasis can build a sports complex under the guise that they would allow New Hanover County Schools to use their facilities. If you look at their website, they have multiple buildings. They have a garage parking deck with a hotel on top of it. They have a restaurant for their patrons. Optimism Oasis is not just building a sports complex so that the school system can use it with the land that they want from New Hanover County Schools that currently belongs to Johnson Pre-K Elementary. Optimism Oasis is a nonprofit portion of a for-profit corporation, and you would be giving a corporation the opportunity to make millions of dollars. Don't do it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Gail Major?
Hello, everyone. First time before some of the new members. Congratulations, Mr. Perry. See in your back, Ms. Justice. Mr. Merrick. I'm here because I wanted the people behind me to see what I saw these last two weeks regarding the AI. A positive, a lot of positive things, truthfully, but there were some concerns. So, the AI had questions, and it was out there publicly beyond North Carolina through the system of the government. So, it was questioned because of some of the financial things that were concerned and the connection to the French military. I was at the town hall, beautifully done, Superintendent Barnes, with a mic for all of us to speak. Then I went, I was the only person from the community, to your planning meeting, also very impressive. So, what I got out of that was we had different parties coming together, having intelligent conversation to make the best decision for the people, that means all of us here, doesn't matter if we're an R and a D, and for the students and whoever's in the building, right? So, as I sat there, I listened to everyone speaking, which was beautiful, but I was concerned about three of you. That is out there. That is out there, not statewide, but also nationwide. When we bring in anything that has to do with foreign military, it goes out there. So, I'm here to inform you, it is being watched, and it is going to have some... They're watching to see what you do. What I understand, it's on the table right now, and whatever else happens. But, the other thing that is also out there nationally is harassment. So, whether you're a candidate, or, excuse me, a board member, it's documented. If you are out there harassing people...
Thank you for your time. Your time is up.
That becomes public.
Thank you.
The Student Code of Conduct lists 65 violations that a student might commit. And although it states that a student's age, developmental level, and grade should be considered when deciding on a disciplinary action for a violation, when it comes to out-of-school suspensions for serious violations, five, six, and seven-year-olds are treated the same as 15, 16, and 17-year-olds. Why? The fact is, the six-year-old brain is developmentally different from a 16-year-old brain. Consider bus safety. Why do you suppose there's a policy that states kindergarten-through-second-grade students must be met at the bus stop by a parent or legal guardian, unless they have submitted a K-2 without parent form? Is it because a five, six, and seven-year-old thinks differently? They are still learning, and they make mistakes, sometimes serious mistakes. Instead of kicking them out of school, they need help and support from our professional educators, school counselors, and social workers. It's time to ban all out-of-school suspension for five, six, and seven-year-olds. It's also time to invest in our youngest learners by bringing teacher assistants back into every K to second-grade classroom for a whole day, and begin hiring more school counselors and social workers to give them reasonable caseloads. Keep our youngest kids in school where they can learn...
Gail Taber?
Good evening, y'all. I'm the Reverend Gail Taber, and I come before you as a pastor in this community, a servant of Jesus Christ, and a shepherd called to protect the most vulnerable among us, especially our children. Scripture teaches us, the Holy Bible teaches us, that every person is made in the image of God, Imago Dei, with sacred worth and dignity, and as we pledged earlier tonight, with freedom for all. When policies are crafted or revised, they must reflect this divine truth. I am deeply grieved by the removal of language that names diversity, inclusion, equity, and gender identity, not because these words are trendy, but because they point to real lives and the real struggle of God's children. And really, they just point to fairness. To erase them is to deny the image of God in our LGBTQIA students, our students of color, and our differently-abled students, all of whom bear the marks of divine creation. Micah 6:8 asks us, "What does the Lord require of us but to do justice, love, mercy, and to walk humbly with our God?" And it's not just a call on a personal righteousness, it's a mandate for public leadership. And the removal of protections, like the policy that prevents advertisers from defaming students based on sexual orientation or gender identity, is not justice. It is a failure of moral courage. To disband the Title IX Committee is to silence those who cry from the margins. Proverbs 31:8 calls us to speak for those who cannot speak for themselves, and for the right, to speak for the rights of those who are destitute. The students affected by these changes may never stand before this microphone, but their pain will echo in our sanctuaries, in our counseling office, and they will be in the hallways of our schools.
Time is up. Please leave the podium. Amanda?
Good evening. My name's Amanda Rismaier. Again, I'm a board-certified behavior analyst and licensed North Carolina analyst, doctoral student of psychology, and a former special education teacher, my most important title. This is my second time speaking to you all. After taking some time to review the literature and research on educational practice regarding out-of-school suspension, I found no evidence that suspension decreases the misbehavior of an individual student, those that are observing an individual engaging in misbehavior, or lead to an increase in school safety, and it definitely doesn't lead to the contribution of creating an environment that's more conducive to learning. Two decades of research actually show the negative effects of exclusionary discipline. In 2003, Dr. Rafael Mendez from Fairleigh Dickinson University published a report titled, "Predictors of Suspension and Negative School Outcomes: A Longitudinal Study." In it, she wrote, "Proponents of out-of-school suspension frequently argue that so-called 'get tough' policies, or zero-tolerance policies, make schools safer and create a better learning climate, and truly, there's no sound research that supports this broad claim." The results of this longitudinal study suggest that frequent use of suspension has no measurable positive deterrent or academic benefit to either the student who is suspended or the non-suspended students. As this research shows, disciplining elementary and middle-school students with out-of-school suspension predicts future suspensions and contributes further to a student's poor academic performance and failure to graduate on time. Fair and consistent discipline administrative policy 4303 states in part, "The board recognizes the negative effects of exclusionary discipline." If you recognize the negative effects of exclusionary discipline, then why are we subjecting children to suspension and seclusion still? What if it was your child? It's your time to end it for five, six, and seven-year-olds. Our youngest learners need effective intervention, compassion, support, and not punishment.
Thank you for your comments. Angie Pekey?
Shout-out to New Hanover High School and the RISE program again. In recent weeks, there's been a lot of discussion around the adolescence film. If you don't believe these things are happening in our schools, you're sadly mistaken. In recent weeks, we've had staff severely injured due to lack of support, large fights where students require hospitalizations, students who self-harm, teachers leaving the field, and parents homeschooling. The community's frustrated that your only solution seems to be more reactive policing and creating policies that further divide and harm students instead of uniting and building trust. Perhaps instead of destroying DEI, Title IX, defunding pre-K, and targeting those who don't fit your agenda, we could shift the focus towards protecting them. Though through much appreciated conversation with the student support team, it was noted that the violence from the community is bleeding over into the schools, and they can't fix that. So why then are we not taking the opportunity to utilize partners within the community who do have skills and resources for violence prevention and reducing toxic stress? Violence is a multifaceted issue and one that deserves a legitimate investment in the community, which New Hanover County has yet to do. We've thrown more law enforcement at the issue to the point where the behavior is now being criminalized and adjusted around that presence. If that approach were going to work, we would have seen it by now. We recognize that it would still be foolish to pull all those officers from our schools overnight, but in eliminating an us-versus-them mentality, the solution lies in a place where schools can tap into those resources that better support families. What we have, in addition to programs like the Health and Opportunities Pilot and the Community Health Worker Violence Prevention Model, is a group of entrusted individuals who've built relationships with the community and who can provide the support that the schools and police may not have because they have not built that level of trust and connection. I encourage you to educate yourself and address the root cause and better-serve students and staffs. On that note, you can't force us to, but you hold our children hostage to your hate every day. You stand for that flag, but you can't stand for the kids in this county.
I'm going to talk about zero-tolerance policies. Short-term suspension policy 4351 states, "No student under age eight or under grade three will be suspended for out-of-school except in response to incidents involving violations of policy 4325, which is drugs and alcohol, 4331, which is assaults and threats, and policy 4333, weapons, bomb threats, terrorist threats, and clear threats to safety." All three exceptions are zero-tolerance policies. Two of them state, "Any student engaging in such behavior will be removed from the classroom or school environment for as long as necessary to provide a safe and orderly environment for learning." But why are five, six, and seven-year-olds being treated the same as 15, 16, and 17-year-olds? Any young child involved with drugs, assault, alcohol, threats, weapons, bomb threats, terrorist threats, and clear threats to safety needs help from professional educators, school counselors, and social workers. Kicking them out of school will not maximize their learning or improve their behavior or problem-solving skills. It will increase their chances of being suspended again, being absent from school, making poor academic progress, not graduating on time, dropping out of school, not continuing their education after high school, and entering the juvenile justice system. It's time to end all out-of-school suspensions for five, six, and seven-year-olds. Thank you very much.
My name is Rachel Dole. I'm a parent in the district and a pastor in the community. Dismantling the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee, banning books, and removing written history because if you find it uncomfortable, only serves to break us further apart. I saw a sign recently that read, quote, "There are no white people in the Bible. Take all the time with this you need," it said. If we start banning books that ask hard questions and speak of justice, we might not like where that could lead. I grew up in Wilmington. My family has been here for generations. As I've been reading history lately, I've learned that some of my ancestors were there in 1898 at the coup d'etat, rewriting history as they saw fit. Later, other ancestors of mine helped to start the first school for black children in Rocky Point. The more I learn, the more I see the importance of standing together, building our future on firm ground with one another. We teach health class in our schools because the more you understand your body, the better you can care for it. The same goes for our community. Banning books that will leave out black and queer voices of our community has not and will not help Wilmington or our country, and it's time we openly learned about our community's past and our nation's past. As playwright and Duke Associate Professor Mike Wiley said, "We tell our history not to make people feel bad, but to make people feel," end quote. People that feel small and afraid inside feel the need to bully and try to silence others. Those who know their worth and see the worth of others know that together, we can build something far stronger and better than any of us can alone. Each one of you on this board has worth. You don't need to try to silence others to prove it. Let's work together to equip every person in our community with the skills and knowledge we all need for them to have.
Thank you. Your time is up.
Teaching our history, the good and the bad, and teaching students.
Ms. Deborah Brunson? Deborah Brunson?
I'm going to pause. Well, I'm not... If you could pause for one second, sir. If you could sit down, please. Thank you.
Is the DEI assault on the school's curriculum driven by fairness or by fear? No matter what restrictions or changes are placed on diversity, it exists, and it will continue to be celebrated with respect and with joy. The community doesn't need this board's permission to do that. This strong, self-sufficient community will still learn, and teachers will still teach. Courage, community. Courage, John Wayne said, "Courage is being scared to death but saddling up anyway." It takes courage to do a course correction even when the party, most of you belong to, is mandating that you do disrespectful things to diverse parents, diverse children, and a diverse community, who have never done anything disrespectful to you. This county has a diverse student body. Here are some thoughts for you to ponder. Two of my grandsons, in the third grade, were told by a white youngster in after-school, "I don't stand behind black kids." You have the power to bend circumstances. I saw this firsthand in the recent board's well-run Policy Committee meeting. Kudos to the legal staff for cautioning against adding "biological" to describe sex. The DPI recently ran a webinar on the Holocaust. Will this material be purged too in HB 171 if HB 171 becomes law? Here's an example of courage and community from 1955. You may not know this, but Mrs. Rosa Parks was bailed out of jail by civil rights leader Edie Nixon, accompanied by a white couple, Virginia Durr and her husband Clifford. Mrs. Durr and Mrs. Parks worked together in a hostile South under life-threatening circumstances to make a better community. There's even courage down the road in White-Vulun-Table City.
Thank you. Your time is up.
Karen Park? Good evening, Dr. Barnes and board. Blessed is the One who walks not in the counsel of the ungodly, nor sits in the path of sinners, nor sits in the path of the scornful, but His delight is in the law of the Lord, and in His law He meditates day and night. The fear of the Lord is the foundation of wisdom, and knowledge of the Holy One results in good judgments. Father, give them complete knowledge of Your will and spiritual wisdom and understanding, so no one will deceive them with well-crafted arguments. For wisdom is shown to be right by its results. I pray You lay down your anxieties, presenting every need with thanksgiving, trusting that His peace, which goes beyond understanding, will guard your heart and mind in Christ Jesus. For the wisdom from above is first of all pure. It is also peace-loving, gentle at all times, and willing to yield to others. It is full of mercy and good deeds. It shows no favoritism and is always sincere. Those who are peacemakers will plant seeds of peace and reap a harvest of righteousness. Guide them, Lord, into Your truth, so they can say with confidence, "We have depended on God's grace and not on our own human wisdom." I bless New Hanover County Schools in the name of Jesus as schools of light and His peace. Amen.
Thank you. Sandy Isles?
What's it like to constantly be defending your hate? Does it gnaw away at you like a cancer? Or is it like a black hole that grows by consuming all of you and where light cannot escape? When I was a little girl, I always wondered if I'd have the courage to stand up against the defenders of hate in Nazi Germany or during the Civil Rights Movement. I hoped I would, yet I never imagined I'd know for certain. Yet, here I am, standing before you today. Most of you would not align your hate with the racism of Nazis or KKK, yet you banned a book because it amplified the voice of a black man. His voice threatened you because you favor the voices of white men and fist bumps with the Proud Boys. You praise school choice despite its segregationist roots spawned from the verdict of Brown versus Board. You support the criminalization of our black boys through your tolerance of our disproportionate behavior practices, questioning why we are even required to report demographic data, Josie. Just as Nazi Germany hated gay men, one of you called transgender students "it," and another spewed hate speech about them across social media. The Nazis exterminated disabled people, finding them to be of no value for society. Some of you find our disabled students to be an inconvenient burden, as you worry more about the other students in the classroom. Tonight, you'll spend far too long defending your hate by justifying the removal of words like diversity, equity, and inclusion from our policies. As Profess Christians, you despise DEI, even though Jesus was the ultimate DEI supporter, demonstrated by His equitable inclusion of His diverse disciples and followers. He never asked you to carry the burden of hate, shame, and darkness. Quite the opposite, He asked you to radiate His light and love. So I guess I've answered my original question regarding what it's like to constantly defend your hate. It's a dark, shameful burden you created for yourself, choosing to reject justice, light, and love.
Thank you. Veronica McGoory-Barnes?
I know that five, six, and seven-year-olds can't be suspended for minor offenses by using inappropriate language, showing disrespect, or insubordination. Today, I'm asking you to end suspensions for all offenses. Dr. Walter Skiliam from the Yale University Child Study Center has said, "We would never send a child home because the child was struggling at reading. We would never send a child home if that child was struggling with math. Why would we send a child home for struggling with socially-emotional sc...
His voice threatened you because you favor the voices of white men and fist bumps with the Proud Boys. You praise school choice despite its segregationist roots spawned from the verdict of Brown versus Board. You support the criminalization of our black boys through your tolerance of our disproportionate behavior practices, questioning why we are even required to report demographic data, Josie. Just as Nazi Germany hated gay men, one of you called transgender students "it" and another spewed hate speech about them across social media. The Nazis exterminated disabled people, finding them to be of no value for society. Some of you find our disabled students to be an inconvenient burden as you worry more about the other students in the classroom. Tonight, you'll spend far too long defending your hate by justifying the removal of words like diversity, equity, and inclusion from our policies. As Prof. Christians, you despise DEI, even though Jesus was the ultimate DEI supporter, demonstrated by His equitable inclusion of His diverse disciples and followers. He never asked you to carry the burden of hate, shame, and darkness. Quite the opposite, He asked you to radiate His light and love. So I guess I've answered my original question regarding what it's like to constantly defend your hate. It's a dark, shameful burden you created for yourself, choosing to reject justice, light, and love.
Thank you.
I know that five, six, and seven-year-olds can't be suspended for minor offenses by using inappropriate language, showing disrespect, or insubordination. Today, I'm asking you to end suspensions for all offenses. Dr. Walter Skiliam from the Yale University Child Study Center has said, "We would never send a child home because the child was struggling at reading. We would never send a child home if that child was struggling with math. Why would we send a child home for struggling with social-emotional skills?" Indeed, why are we sending children home for struggling with social-emotional needs? You might say, "Oh, we don't have enough staff to keep them in school," or "We don't have enough rooms to work with those children," or "Our staff isn't trained to handle those problems." As a lifelong educator and a lover of children, I'm asking you to invest in our youngest learners. Hire more educators, teaching assistants, school counselors, and social workers. Be creative with finding spaces for the needed interventions and supports. And as for training, get real. Our teachers are overworked and underpaid. Every time you add something new, something else has to be taken off their plate. And most importantly, teachers deserve a seat at the table where decisions are made. And use the Maryland State statute that was spoken of tonight to transition from punitive measures to proactive interventions for our children. Get the suspension policy right, and then do the job. Like the teacher was up here talking about at New Hanover High School, the RISE program, that should be happening in every classroom, every day in this system.
Thank you.
When I retired a few years ago, I promised that I would continue to advocate for both teachers and students, and I'm here tonight to talk about the assault against LGBTQIA youth's civil rights. I know that due to personal beliefs, a number of you believe these youth do not need or deserve equality and protection. However, your personal beliefs don't matter here. You were elected to represent all New Hanover County school students equally and fairly. Recently, there have been a number of directives from the federal government to change laws and even words in laws that result in stripping away civil rights. And this board, because of personal beliefs, has jumped at the opportunity to align its laws with the federal government under the guise of just wanting to adhere to policy. For those of us who closely follow the board, it's easy to see who is using it as an excuse to discriminate against those whose existence you reject. From the time we're little children, we're always told that bullies are bad and we should never be a bully, and more so if we see someone being bullied, we should speak out. That's why I'm speaking out now. Since the majority on this board were elected in 2022, you've taken multiple actions to try to humiliate and discount these marginalized youth who you were elected to protect. How dare you? If you feel elated and powerful as their civil rights are taken away, you are a bully and you ought to be ashamed. People don't pretend to change gender, to use a different restroom, or to perform in a different sports league. No one is going to open themselves up to such extreme criticism unless living their life authentically is more important than fitting into society's expectations. The least you can do as a board is to recognize their dignity as human beings and protect them as you do all the other students in New Hanover County schools. This in turn would make you a good human and not a bully with a mouth full of scripture and a heart full of hate. Thank you.
Thank you.
I want to bring attention to North Carolina State's statue 7B-101, which addresses juvenile justice and juvenile code. The statue recognizes three types of juveniles, including delinquent, undisciplined juveniles who are defined as being less than 16 years of age but at least 10 years of age. The third is vulnerable juvenile, which includes any child between the ages of nine who commits a crime or infraction. The law supports these children through a juvenile court council who offers up to six months of case management. It includes screening, assessment, access to community resources, and programming for a child and their family. However, I feel compelled to express concern regarding the School Board policy 4351, which punishes our youngest learners, five, six, and seven, by expelling them for issues like drugs, assaults, and weapons. This policy appears to lack the supportive framework that our juvenile justice system provides. I urge you to reconsider this policy and create a new suspension policy that outright bans all out-of-school suspensions for our five, six, and seven-year-olds and ensure that they receive the essential help and support they deserve. Thank you.
Thank you. Chris Sutton? And then again for Jackie DeLazio. And that concludes the call to the audience.
All right, Board members, we're going to take a five-minute recess and come back at 7:00.
We are back in session. Board members, back to the dais, please. All right, we are continuing on with consensus items.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve the consensus items.
Right. Any discussion? Hearing none.
Point of inquiry, madam. I did not hear.
My mic is on. I don't know. I don't know what's going on with the mics.
Nope. Give us one sec, we'll figure it out.
It says it's on. Sorry.
Can you hear? Hello?
No. Nope. Mics are not working.
Mics are not working. Oh, are they? No. I thought I heard myself.
It's not just for us.
Are we good? Can you hear me? A little better? All right, I'll put it right up to my face. All right, we have a motion to approve consensus items. And a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes seven to zero. Continuing to policy, I am going to turn it over to the Chair of Policy, Mr. Wildaborn.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you. We did allow a half hour to discuss these individual policies. It needed, but I'll make a motion that we pass the policies as provided 1310 all the way to 9120 as written.
Second. All right, discussion. I saw Mr. Perry, and then I know Dr. Merrick has some concerns, so.
After speaking earlier with Ms. Barnhart, can you hear this? Ms. Barnhart, I believe we need to pull off 4303 due to the last paragraph. I think maybe we missed that part.
I think we did, yeah. Okay, so 4303.
I'd make an amendment to say to remove that one from the consensus.
Okay. Are there any others that need to be removed? Dr. Merrick, you had a list, correct?
I'd like to remove 3100, 3200, 4140. Hold it down, hold it down. Hold it down right now.
I got them written. How many does that leave, sir?
That would leave us 1310, 3031, 3034, 20, 40... No, you said we're taking that one off too. Let's see, 50... Did you say 5240? Yes, you did. And 71, 7130.
Okay, so, motion to approve the policies that Mr. Wildaborn just listed that remain.
1310, yep.
Is there a second? Is there any others that need to be removed, Ms. Justice?
Oh, okay. That's what we're on right now. Because I wanted to make a comment.
Well, we're just removing right now, and then we'll discuss some of the policies in a minute. This is just to vote to pass those.
Go right in.
All right.
Can we repeat which ones are being pulled, please?
The ones...
Well, I'll leave you with what we got left.
There's...
1310, 3031, 3420, 7130.
That's left.
That's what's left.
So five.
Those are the ones to approve. All right. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Those pass seven to zero. All right.
So let's pull up 3130 to begin with.
That's a great idea. 3100 will do.
I'm sorry. I'm going to give him his 3100.
So that is curriculum development. Who brought that forward? Was that you, Dr. Merrick? All right, go ahead, sir.
So, changing the word, and if it would please, Madam Chair, for time's sake, I believe I could combine 3100, 3200, 4140, and 4310 as my objections are largely the same.
Can you go through this again?
I'm sorry. 3100, 3200, 4140, and 4310.
Okay.
Is that a motion?
No, he's just grouping them all together. And so your concerns are, sir?
My concerns that changing the word diversity, when it is completely unnecessary, no one's rights are being abridged by using this word. And I want you to notice that the President's executive order, and I will read the title of it, is "Ending Radical and Wasteful Government DEI Programs and Preferencing." And in Section 4, Paragraph C, it reads, "This order is not intended to and does not create any right or benefit substantive or procedural enforceable at law or in equity by any party against the United States." So what you're seeing is that the word equity in itself is not a problem. The word diversity is not a problem. It's... The executive orders talk about using DEI and how it would abridge certain people's rights. Even that is not law, but I'm willing to go along with the rest of the board with those executive orders. But this is not it. When we take away the word equity, when we take away the word diversity, we are telling something to the public. We are telling something to our students. We are telling people who are already feeling marginalized. And so I would like to make a motion that we deny the change in verbiage in these four policies and revert them back to their original form.
Okay, there's a motion. I will have order. We do have business to do. Please be respectful. We need a second for his motion.
Well, I'll second it.
Okay. Ms. Justice?
I'll second it, but I want to tell you now, I'm going to vote against every one of these. It's like I said during the policy committee. I taught history for a very long time in government, civics. I know the law. This executive order means nothing. It's not the law, and it's basically created to confuse. I know people don't want to hear it for political reasons. We're here to educate our children. We need to teach them facts. The beauty of this country, I look around this audience, is our diversity, and that's one of the reasons we've become the strongest nation in the world. And it didn't happen immediately. Back before the Civil War, we were a mess. And after 1965, and I've been around long enough to know that, this country has just exploded in science, knowledge, creativity, and all of that, in my opinion, being as old as I am and have studied history, studied government, is from that. So I'm not going to vote for any of this. This is ridiculous. It's not the law. It's being done out of, I don't know, capitulation to a bully. We stand up in our schools every day and tell our kids not to do that. Don't bully other children. Be brave, speak out. Everybody... Everybody up here should. They know better. But on the other hand, I'm not voting for any of them. I'm going to leave them the way they are. I'm just announcing that now. That's the end of my discussion.
Mr. Perry?
Good evening. As to Mr. Merrick's motion, I agree to the extent that diversity is not for that a word in and of itself. But it has been hijacked to some extent in literature, public commentary, and if-- and there are-- we are, like it or not, we now have a federal government who is very intent on making sure that we get rid of this language out of our policies, or we could be risking many millions of dollars in our school district budget. So therefore, when we see it, even in cases where we-- the word diversity isn't referring to DEI, if there's any way that that could be construed or cost us millions of dollars, I'd rather use alternate words. So that's all.
Thank you. Mr. Wildeborn?
And I, you know, I don't disagree with my colleague over here that diversity is not a bad word. But I, you know, I look at the word heritage. Why is heritage a bad word? I don't understand that. You know, if we look at Policy 3200, the rich heritage of our nation, that, to me, that is a well-versed way to say it. You know, why not say it, you know, if we can improve the wording, why not do it? And I think heritage actually improves Policy 3200.
Okay, there is a motion on the table to leave policies, to revert policies 3100, 3200, 4310, and 4140 to the original language. Ms. Bowie, will you call the roll?
Ms. Bradford?
No.
Dr. Merrick?
Yes.
Mr. Wildeborn?
No.
Mr. Perry?
No.
Ms. Justice?
Yes.
Ms. Barnhart?
No.
And Ms. Mason?
No. That fails five to two. Madam Chair, I make a motion to adopt 3100, 3200, 4140.
If you continue to be disruptive.
4310, as presented. I make a motion to adopt 3100, 3200, 41.
Please pause, Ms. Barnhart.
Go ahead.
Make a motion to approve 3100, 3200, 4140, and 4310, as presented.
I'll second the motion.
Ms. Bowie, will you call the roll?
Mr. Perry?
Aye.
Ms. Justice?
No.
Ms. Bradford?
Yes.
Dr. Merrick?
In league with the most underprivileged, I do not approve.
Mr. Wildeborn?
Aye.
Ms. Barnhart?
Yes.
And Ms. Mason?
Yes. That passes five to two. We have the next policy, I believe, is 5240.
If we're going in order, then 43, 03.
Oh, is it 40? I'm sorry. Thank you. 4303? I make a motion to send 4303 back to policy.
I second the motion.
Okay. Any discussion?
Could I hear it again?
4303 back to policy. Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes seven to zero.
Madam Chair?
Ms. Bradford?
Just a point of clarification. We have three left, 5240 and 6220. I think the objections are almost identical, so do we want to combine those?
I would have to ask the individual that put those forward. That would be Dr. Merrick. Are those similar concerns?
I am very willing to put together 5240 and 6220 together, but not with 9120.
No, I didn't mean that.
Nope. Okay, so.
Ms. Mason?
Mr. Wildeborn?
If we could ask the attorneys for their input on those two policies, I was gonna do that anyway. For 5240 and 6220, please.
What specifically are you asking?
Actually, the word biological.
5240 and 6220.
5240 and 6220.
5240 and 6220.
It was the changing of sex to biological sex.
Yeah. 5240, I think, is the policy dealing with that.
Correct.
I don't see any risk to us, any doubts. I mean, it's a policy called for the board. I don't see it exposes any liability for making that change or any compliance problems. Either way, nowhere known. The policy.
6220? That is Operation of School Nutrition Services with suggested edits.
Ms. Mason? If I could.
Mr. Wildeborn, go ahead.
If you don't mind. We just want to clarify the word biological in that, in those two same pol-- those two policies.
Biological is inserted in both of those.
Yeah. First is sex, just having sex.
I understand what you're saying.
Biological sex.
And 6220 is deals with operational standards of the school nutrition services. The proposal was, as we read right now, Title I, means school officials may not discriminate based on race, sex, inclusion, pregnancy, childbirth, lower national origin disability age, or eligibility status, bringing those ice meals. The proposal, as you can see, was to change it, to qualify, not discriminate based on race, biological sex, child work, parenting status, to be other vision. This discussion actually came about in the bullying policy that the board, Title IX issue. And the concern that I had was, you know.
About Title IX in particular. Title IX, the language of the statute, talks about discrimination based on sex. Now, apparently, that language was fine for 50 years, from 1972 until 2022, when gender identity was added. And I think one of the problems now is that we are, I think, are proposing to take out all references to gender identity, but qualify sex by saying biological. And that's not quite in line with what the Fourth Circuit says in the Grimm case. So I think we would be safer to just leave it the way it was before 2022 and just leave sex as sex. Now here, we're dealing with discrimination and a ban on discrimination, again. I don't see the need to qualify sex by just saying biological sex there. If you believe it's biological sex, well, you're already covered by just the term sex. There's no additional, there's no benefit to qualifying that by saying biological sex. The parenting status, and look, you can add as many protected classes as you want. It's not, that's never gonna create additional liability for us, maybe more headache enforcement-wise, but it's just, it seems unnecessary to qualify, and probably not the greatest idea in the world when we talk about Title IX compliance, to qualify sex by saying biological sex only. Because I know that at least one panel of the Fourth Circuit, the Grimm Panel disagrees with that reading of it. So my suggestion would be just leave it at sex.
Okay, Mr. Perry?
My understanding from your concerns at the Policy Committee was that in this particular, on a couple of these particular cases that didn't specifically deal with Title IX, that you thought the addition of the word biological was fine. Are you now changing your mind?
He was gonna do more research.
I did not remember the discussion of 6220, but fortunately, one of the other staff members who was there had handed me her notes. And apparently, that, according to these notes, I had said, yeah, just, you know, let's not add in the qualification of biological sex there. Again, you know, I'll do my best to defend whatever policy decisions you guys make, but I think you're better off just leaving good enough alone and leaving it at the word sex instead of qualifying that. Some people would view that as a narrowing of the anti-discrimination protections. And, you know, I don't know what benefit comes from that. But I can think of some potential problems with it, so.
Ms. Bradford?
I am going to move that we separate these back out and that we adopt 6220 without the word biological, based on the recommendation of our legal counsel.
I'll second it.
Discussion?
Mr. Perry?
Well, I appreciate the wisdom of our board attorneys. I believe there's another case we are forgetting now, which is Tennessee versus, which was just this year, Tennessee versus Cardona, which is also Fourth Circuit, not an appeals court, but nonetheless, that's what stopped the Biden rules integrating gender identity into Title IX, and the kibosh was put down on it. And this happened even before President Trump was sworn in the office. I believe if we want to comply with this, we need to use precise language. And, you know, there was a day when, you know, 50 years ago, when sex meant biological sex and gender was the same thing as sex, but no longer. We need to define our terms. And so we have to come to a decision today as a board. Do you want, what do we mean? Do we mean biological sex? Do we mean, we want to leave it open and tacitly approve what the liberal Fourth Circuit has ruled in Grimm five years ago? So you have to make a decision. Vote your conscience or vote not to get sued. That's where I'm at.
Dr. Merrick?
Thank you. And while I don't agree with putting the word biological in for the very reasons that our lawyer has stated, we're missing the elephant in the room. Because the more concerning part for me is by deleting the protection around sexual orientation and gender identity. Now, the Supreme Court in Bostic versus Clayton County ruled that discrimination against someone for being gay or transgender is inherently discrimination based on sex, which then makes it fall under Title IX. Title IX uses the phrase sex, not biological sex, and like our lawyer pointed out, this change may be in conflict. Title IX states that not only can't we discriminate or harass based on sex, but we also have to give notices on our website, we have to notify parents, students, employees, we've got to conduct trainings for employees, all around sex discrimination. The Code of Federal Regulations, Title 34, which covers education and is current as of March 28, '25, in Part 106.10, states, "Discrimination on the basis of sex includes discrimination on the basis of sex stereotypes, sex characteristics, pregnancy or related conditions, sexual orientation, and gender identity." If we're going to leave in pregnancy conditions as a protection in our policy, why in the world would we be removing sexual orientation and gender identity? I'm sure that you're all aware, there is a critical mental health crisis among teens today. In 2020, 67 children in North Carolina under the age of 18 died by suicide. In 2021, 23% of North Carolina high school students reported seriously considering suicide. 46% of the queer community seriously considered suicide. That's twice the rate. 53% of transgender and non-binary youth seriously considered suicide. These are from the NIH and CDC, by the way. In a survey of New Hanover County students, 10% of high school males reported sexual harassment, whereas 47% of LGBTQ plus students did. While I believe Dr. Burns when he says that regardless of policy, he will work to protect every student, and I very much appreciate that, I have to ask my fellow board members what the message is that they're hoping to send to our LGBTQ students, who, by the way, make up one-tenth of our students. What's the message to their parents, to our community, when you seek to remove badly-needed protections for them? I move to deny this change in verbiage in Policy 5240 and 6220 that sends a chilling, chilling message to our community and endangers our students.
The table, is there a second?
Again.
Ms. Bradford? So was that an amendment, or was that a motion?
A motion to deny the change of verbiage.
Okay, so there is already a motion on the table. We need to vote on the original motion before we can vote on your motion. So the original motion is to pass 6220 without the word biological, but leaving the rest as is.
Then I will amend it.
Barnhart?
Thank you. So I was not privy to this information my colleague just shared, but from what I gleaned just auditory listening to you, my understanding is, based on what you read, with sex, that is included, gender identity and sexual orientation is included, if you just have the word sex in there, not eliminating the biological. So I, just from what I heard, I don't recall the pregnancy and childbirth being mentioned in the montage that I just heard, but I do believe that when we have the word sex in there, it covers, and I would love for legal to speak to this, it does cover not discriminating based on sexual orientation and gender identity, and I would like confirmation of that prior to the vote.
Attorneys?
That is true with respect to the Fourth Circuit. Mr. Perry mentioned the Tennessee case. An interesting thing about that, the appeals court in that case never reached the question of whether the Biden administration's view of the law was correct or not. They said that they failed to comply with the Administrative Procedures Act. Now, had they gotten to it, I'm quite sure that they would have concluded that the Biden administration was wrong, based on the rest of the discussion in it. But the Fourth Circuit's case, the Grimm case, you know, it deals with Title IX. And Title IX and Title VII, the statute at issue in Bostic are quite different. Title IX, I'm looking at it on my computer, it uses the words "students of one sex" and the terms "students of both sexes." So obviously, Title IX views sex as, you know, a binary thing. You are either one or the other. You are not, you know, you can't be multiple or none. You fall into one bucket or the other. Be that as it may, I think Grimm got it wrong, but Grimm's the law that we're stuck with right now, and, you know, if we don't want to get sued, the way to do it is to comply with that. If the statute does use the term sex, just sex, earlier in Title IX, that's the safe way to go. We use sex, we copy the statute. You're always safe using word-for-word the language of the statute. So that's my take on it. I don't, I'm not endorsing the Grimm view, I'm just telling you that that's where we are.
But based on the statute, sex is in the statute.
Sex is in the statute.
That clarifies all those. Okay, thank you for that clarity.
Ms. Justice?
Okay, my concern about sex, clarifying everything, it has in parentheses, "after biological sex," which we've already said that that's something that we want to leave out, or some people have, we're gonna vote on all of this. It says after the terms here, "biological sex," including pregnancy, childbirth, and parenting status, and these are in parentheses, and sexual orientation and gender identity has been taken out of the parentheses. Now, if we're gonna put "including pregnancy, childbirth, and parenting status," and yet take out sexual orientation and gender identity, that in itself is so prejudiced against gender identity and sexual orientation. So I say put that back in there and be very clear. I totally agree about a pregnant child, you know, a student, or even staff, but the point is, is that if that's gonna be left in, then this should be left in too.
All right. Dr. Merrick, this is your last opportunity.
Yes, I would like to amend the motion to say that we would pass 6220, taking out the word biological and leaving in the words sexual orientation and gender identity. the word biological and leaving in the words sexual orientation and gender identity.
Second.
Okay. Mr. Perry?
The reason, the reason some of these things are left out and some of them included, to me, it's all very bewildering. This is a school nutrition program. We're not going to be discriminating against anybody for any reason for this school nutrition. I mean, why do we even have these class suspect classifications in a school nutrition program? I mean, you know what, I'm going to make a motion that we just remove every single one of these classes from the policy.
We cannot add on to an amendment. So there is, Mr. Wildebohr?
I'll call the question.
Second.
Okay. This ends discussion. That requires, remind me, two-thirds. All right, Ms. Bowie, will you call the roll to end discussion on this amendment?
This is the amendment?
The amendment.
End discussion.
Go ahead. Ms. Bradford?
Call the question.
Call the question.
Okay.
No.
You're calling the question? It's calling the question.
Oh, sorry, yes, I'm confused. Yes, to call the question.
Okay, let's restate it right, all over again. This is for ending discussion, this is call the question, this is what we're voting on right now, is calling the question and ending discussion. Clear?
Okay.
Okay. Ms. Bradford?
Point of inquiry.
Yes, of the amendment.
Of the amendment, thank you.
Ms. Bradford?
Yes.
Dr. Merrick?
Yes.
Mr. Wildebohr?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Justice?
Yes.
Ms. Barnhart?
Yes.
And Ms. Mason? Yes. Okay, so the amendment is to approve Policy 6220, removing biological and adding back in sexual orientation and gender identity. Ms. Bowie, will you call the roll? Ms. Bradford?
No.
Dr. Merrick?
Yes.
Mr. Wildebohr?
No.
Mr. Perry?
No.
Ms. Justice?
Yes.
Ms. Barnhart?
No.
And Ms. Mason? No. So back to the original motion, which was to approve Policy 6220, removing the word biological. You've spoken twice on this already.
I'd like to make an amendment to that one.
Go ahead.
Point of parliamentary inquiry.
Is that?
I don't believe that would be allowed, because we have, we already had amendments, so then it would be a second amendment. We voted on this.
I agree with that.
Okay, then no, no amendment.
I made one, and you said I was out of order for making an amendment to an amendment.
Sir?
I challenged the board, the interpretation of the board, of the chair.
Justice to vote.
Okay. So there is a-
I would ask the parliamentary rule.
There is a challenge to my ruling. That requires a two-thirds vote. If you believe I was incorrect in my ruling, vote yes. If you believe I was correct in my ruling, vote no. Ms. Bowie, will you call the roll? Ms. Bradford?
No.
Dr. Merrick?
No.
Mr. Wildebohr?
No.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Justice?
No.
Ms. Barnhart?
No.
And Ms. Mason? No. That fails. The motion to approve Policy 6220, removing the word biological. Ms. Bowie, will you call the roll? Ms. Bradford?
Yes.
Dr. Merrick?
No.
Mr. Wildebohr?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes, despite everything else.
Ms. Justice?
No.
Ms. Barnhart?
Yes.
And Ms. Mason? Yes, that passes five to two. We are at time for our policies, so-
Chair?
Ms. Bradford?
I move that we adopt Policy 5240 as written.
Second.
Point of order, we were just told that we are out of time. I think we need to extend time.
To extend.
Okay, is there a motion to extend time?
No.
I make a motion to extend time for 10 minutes.
Second. Okay. There's a motion to extend time for 10 minutes. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
No.
Okay, can you call the roll on that one? Ms. Bradford?
Yes.
Dr. Merrick?
No.
Mr. Wildebohr?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Justice?
No.
Ms. Barnhart?
No.
And Ms. Mason? Yes. That passes four to three. So we have 10 minutes. Ms. Bradford, you had a motion.
I move that we pass Policy 5240 as written.
And is there a second? I'll second. Any discussion? Dr. Merrick, then Mr. Perry?
I have a feeling I'm going to sound a little bit like a broken record here, but when I hear my colleagues say, well, doesn't sex just sort of cover all of it legally? It does. But we are not simply legal here. We are in community, we have a responsibility to our students, to our staff, to our parents, and to the community at large. And when we tell our students that we will not protect them if they are LGBTQ, even if maybe legally we would, by just telling them, no, nah, you're not worth it, we're going to take you out of that policy, when there's absolutely no reason to take it from the policy, I am incensed, I am hurt. I feel a great communion to the gay community, and I feel like this is a personal attack on me.
Mr. Perry?
I think I can get what I was going to do with the last policy into this one. I would like to make a motion on Part B, number two, to remove everything after abusive language and remove everything that's starting at such-as-language all the way to the end of the period before number three. We don't need, we just need, we don't need a bunch of protected classes, we just need to make sure that our student community is in abused, period.
So, sir, just so you know, you can't make a motion after a motion, you can make an amendment to a motion.
What was the original motion?
The original motion was to pass 52-
Forty.
Forty, as written.
I'd like to make an amendment to the motion to say that.
Okay, so could you please say that amendment, please, again?
Clearly.
To remove everything in Part B, Section Two, after abusive language, beginning at such-as-language all the way to the end of point number two.
Okay. Is there a second to that amendment?
I'll second that.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I can't find that, can you help me?
It is Part B, under prohibited advertisement messages.
Two contains libelous statements, personal attacks, and abusive language, anything after that.
Okay, Ms. Justice?
Yeah, that's a mouthful, after abusive language, but if you read down there, there's things that definitely need, that are not abusive language. Encourages commission of unlawful acts or the violation of unlawful school regulations, that's not necessarily abusive. Is inappropriate considering the age of the students in the school, that's not in abuse, that's not necessarily abusive. Includes information that is inaccurate, misleading, or false, same thing. And then, here we go again, is for any product or service not permitted to minors by law. So just by ending it right there, you're leaving out a whole bunch of areas.
I think there's, I think for clarity purpose, I don't believe Mr. Perry was referring to removing the rest of that. It was simply, just for clarity.
The rest of two.
It is to remove everything, here, I'll read the specifics. So it was after abusive language, correct?
Okay.
So such-as-language defaming a person's character, race, religion, ethnic origin, biological sex, including pregnancy, childbirth, and parenting status, family status, or disability. That's what Mr. Perry is looking to remove, yes.
All right. Taking out, you're offering to take out Section Two, but leave in Three, Four, and Five?
Correct. That is, that is the amendment that has been proposed. Dr. Merrick?
I do appreciate that, in some ways, that kind of equal, you know, levels out the playing field, but I wouldn't want anyone's personal character to be defamed. I wouldn't want it to be defamed based on race, I wouldn't want it to be defamed based on religion. I wouldn't want any of these things. I don't think that we should be allowing our advertisers to defame any students of any class, protected or otherwise.
Madam Chair.
Ms. Bradford?
I'm going to read it. The Board of Education prohibits advertising that is vulgar, indecent, or obscene. Where Mr., the motion to amend is to leave that, but take, take out, contains libelous statements, personal attacks, abusive language.
No.
Nope.
Starts at that.
Including?
Such-as.
Okay. Such-as-language defaming a person's character, race, religion, ethnic. Haven't been in advertising for like 40 years, there are specific laws that have to do with advertising and what you can have and what you cannot have in an advertisement, and the government takes it very seriously, so I would need legal advice on this.
Attorneys, could you weigh in?
Are you asking me? I apologize, I was, I was looking at the language in the, it's highlighted behind you if you want to see exactly what the proposal is.
It's right on the screen.
Yep, we have it.
Prior to biological.
Yeah.
After abusive language.
Yeah, I couldn't support that without a legal opinion that tells me that's okay.
I think we'd need to research that to, to remove so, so much of that, number two, Mr. Perry, we need to look at that first.
And, well, one of the problems you've got is you're taking away your ability to police clearly offensive advertising messages.
Yeah, again, the law is very strict on advertising.
And some of which, you know, again, if we skip back to Title IX in this, the whole idea, the umbrella of Title IX is any educational program, the educational program. So to the extent that that, you know, I don't think you could have, you would have a problem compliance-wise if you had, say, The Klan advertising at your football games, some of their ideas that openly discriminated against certain groups. And I'm looking, disability, for example, is, you know, I can't imagine a group actually wanting to advertise something that, that, you know-
It's weird.
Did that, but yeah, I, I think, I'm having a hard time thinking of a compliance example with it, but it just doesn't strike me as a good idea, but.
Okay. Ms. Barnhart, you had something?
Madam Chair, I'd like to offer a substitute motion to send this back to policy.
Okay.
In addition to the robust discussion that's currently happening, I feel like it's warranted some further discussion. I know for me personally, advertising in schools, this is always a questionable thing. There's pros and cons of every, every side of the coin here, but I feel like this should have further discussion in policy, so I would make a substitute motion to send this back to policy.
Second.
Parliamentary procedure, is a substitute acceptable?
Because there's already been an amendment.
Because there's already been an amendment to the original motion.
Asking all the questions tonight.
No.
Ms. Mason, point of order.
We're getting clarification right now, so can-
If it would help, I will withdraw my motion, and then you can-
That would help.
Yes, you would withdraw.
Withdraw the amendment.
Okay. That solves the problem. So-
I'll make a substitute motion, I'm sorry.
Amendment.
I make a substitute, um, motion, well, it's a substitute motion because it's not speaking to. So I make a substitute motion to send Policy 5240 back to policy.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion?
I'll have a second of discussion.
Ms. Bradford? We have about a minute forty, thirty left of our time, so.
Ideally, I would say yes, but because of the makeup of this board, we will simply send it back to policy, they'll come back here, we'll have another 20 or 30 minutes debating it, and we'll end up in exactly the same place. I am getting to the point where I am feeling like we don't need a policy committee because we don't take their recommendations, so I want to just keep plowing on, and if the motion that I made fails, then it fails.
All right, so there is a substitute motion to move this to policy. Ms. Bowie, will you call the roll? Mr. Perry?
Aye.
Ms. Justice?
Yes.
Ms. Bradford?
No.
Dr. Merrick?
Yes.
Mr. Wildebohr?
No.
Ms. Barnhart?
Yes.
And Ms. Mason? No. That passes four to three. With 30 seconds, we have how many policies left?
One.
Ninety-one, twenty?
What do we do with 4,400 then?
Forty, oh, 4,400 was another one?
Yeah, I have 31, 30, so 4,400, and 4,400, and 91, 20.
Okay. Ms. Barnhart?
Oh, we were just dealing with the one and-
Ms. Barnhart?
I was going to make a motion to postpone the rest of the policy discussion to next month.
Second.
Any discussion?
Didn't hear.
She's postponing the remaining policies. Mr. Wildebohr, could you list those one more time?
By my count, and I may be wrong, we may have passed, I think Dr. Merrick taken 4,400 off, so maybe we've already passed 4,400.
Yes.
But I have 3,420, we haven't discussed yet, 31, 31, 30, discussed yet.
You're right.
And then 91, 20.
Yes.
That may amount to wrong.
Yeah. You're right.
Okay. So there's a motion to send those policies back, or postpone them till next month? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
That passes five to two. Okay. Um, old business. Um, Dr. Morgan, to talk about the NC DOT acquisition of Right of Way at Johnson Pre-K Center.
Last week, I think you got everything that you need regarding Department of Transportation's proposal to purchase that right-of-way, the land that we currently own with Johnson. Johnson Pre-K is 13.44. Is the mic on? Oh, it was a user error, I apologize. Okay, thank you. All right, beginning again, so I think you've got everything you need for the Department of Transportation's proposal to acquire the right-of-way at Johnson Pre-K Center. They are offering $1,706,785 to purchase 13.447 acres as part of their plan for the railway proposal.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Bradford?
I move that we accept this recommendation by the staff to approve this sale.
Was there a second?
Second.
All right, Mr. Perry?
Just very quickly, we heard from a member of the community tonight about optimism, oasis, a sports complex, does this have anything to do with it?
No, sir. Unrelated.
Okay. Dr. Merrick?
Remind me, it's, it seems to me there was a small amount of that 1.7-plus million that was restricted. Can you remind me?
Mm-mm.
A small amount. It had to be used for a specific purpose.
I'm not aware of that, and I'm certainly happy to follow up on that and let you know.
Okay. Ms. Sutton, do you, do you have any information on that? Any restrictions?
That's that question again, a restriction on?
Yeah, originally, we had asked for like 1.6 or 1.65 or whatever, and then there was an additional ask, and that it had to be used for a specific purpose.
The only thing I recall is additional debate about putting up fencing or something similar to that, and that was not approved. They, they did not respond to that request, so this would not include that. That, and that may not be what you're referring to, that's the only thing I can recall.
I, as you were talking, there was also talk about moving the playground. That was, I believe, what, what you were referring to, Dr. Merrick, if, is that correct?
We're not exactly netting 1.7 point whatever, right?
Oh, correct, I understand what you're asking now. So the request was in part for, to, to fund-
The only thing I recall is additional debate about putting up fencing or something similar to that, and that was not approved. They they did not respond to that request. So this would not include that. That and that may not be what you're referring to. That's the only thing I can recall.
I I'm, as you were talking, there was also talk about moving the playground. That was, I believe, what what you were referring to, Dr. Merrick. If if is that correct?
We're not exactly netting one point seven point whatever, right?
Oh, correct. I understand what you're asking now. So the request was in part for
to to fund the labor for moving those. So that was that was in part why they they came back with a higher figure.
All right. Uh, Ms. Justice?
This is gonna seem, I'm not sure. After hearing the gentleman today about Johnson preschool, okay, is it, once that buys this land, is it stipulated they have to use it for that? There's there couldn't be some way that down the road, something could happen. I mean, I'm just, I I didn't think about this, but there's way too many strange things that go on these days with, you know.
Barn, oh, let's let Dr. Morgan answer.
Well, Dr. Morgan doesn't have an answer for that.
Okay.
I really can't speak to what the Department of Transportation may or may not do in the future. I think their proposal right now is to purchase this. And I, the best I can tell you is the the contract that they are offering us or offering you, the board.
Okay. Um, Ms. Barnhart?
What I believe my colleagues might be speaking to is the property of land that was close to Mary C. Williams and the discussion of a new build school there. I believe that's where, are you speaking of the call to audience speaker?
Right.
The so that is different, different, um, different spot of land.
Okay, I'm just getting confused.
No, I understand. I understand. I wish I could tell you that that won't happen, but I can't.
I thought it was the Pre-K.
Mr. Perry?
Um, I did, so they refuse, did I catch this right? They refuse to put up any kind of sound barrier?
Essentially, they've refused to respond. So I think for all practical purposes, the lack of a response is a refusal to accommodate that request.
Okay.
In that case, I would suggest we vote no. This is a school first.
So, all right, there is a motion to Ms. Justice.
Yeah, I'm sorry. He's got a point. How long will this be? How often will these trains go by? Is this gonna, has anybody looked at the, thank you. You got a bunch of little kids in there, and I've lived next to railroad tracks back both my grandpas. We're engineers. Yeah, it gets pretty darn loud. Dr. Barnes, have you looked at this? Do you know what's going on?
This has been so far in the future that they haven't really given us any indication of that. We're talking eight to ten years before they move this down the road. So we really, I didn't explore that option about how loud it would be.
I didn't know it was that long down the road?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. There is a Mr. Wildebor.
Well, with that being, you know, this is all down the road, is there a time limit for them to score that total?
I mean, we can, I can certainly continue that discussion.
Okay.
If I may, go ahead. Dr. Barnes?
I do want to let you guys know that that money we did include in this year's budget.
Hmm.
And so it would, it may, if we don't, just know that we may have to come back and do an amendment to our budget later.
Okay.
Ashley, did I say that correctly?
Correct.
Right, yeah.
You've had to. I'm sorry.
I have had to, okay.
Yep, you had to. All right. Is there any other, there is a motion on the table to accept. Ms. Booley, will you call the roll?
Ms. Bradford?
Yes.
Dr. Merrick?
Yes.
Mr. Wildebor?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Given the fact that we need the money, yes.
Ms. Justice?
Yes.
Ms. Barnhart?
Yes.
And Ms. Mason?
Yes. All right. Thank you, Dr. Warren.
Thank you.
Next up is the Superintendent twenty-two-five, twenty-six recommended budget. Ms. Sutton.
Good evening, everyone. Last week, we presented the Superintendent's twenty-two-five, twenty-two-six budget for recommendation, just for informational purposes. However, tonight, I'm requesting approval of that budget plan, including the budget request that we're gonna submit to the county for consideration by the county commissioners. And so that budget request, there's a letter that was provided to you that we would be sharing if this is approved tonight with the county manager, county commissioners tomorrow. The additional request of the county would be seven million, nine hundred, sixty-four thousand, seven hundred and sixty-four in operating, and that included the budget priorities that we identified during the budget process, and then a capital outlay request of nineteen million, four hundred, thirty thousand, seven hundred and thirty-three. So requesting approval from the board to move forward with that budget request of the county commissioners and to move forward with the budget plan to come back with a resolution in May.
I make a motion that we accept the Superintendent's twenty-four, twenty-five recommended budget.
Seconds.
Twenty-five, I can't read. Yeah, twenty-five, twenty-six. I'll work on that.
That one, that one, the one that says right here. Thank you.
Can I make an amendment to that motion? I would like to.
Do we need a second before we have the?
We got a second.
We got a second. Okay, go ahead.
I'd like to make an amendment to that, removing the increase of stipend of seven thousand, nine hundred, forty-two dollars.
Pardon?
Point of inquiry.
Where is this?
Seven thousand dollars for the board?
Yes, sir.
Oh, us?
The seven thousand, nine hundred, forty-two dollar ask. I would make a motion to amend the motion to remove that ask.
Okay. Is there a second? Hearing none. Madam Chair? Ms. Bradford?
I would support the motion, but there was just one little part of what we passed last Tuesday that I left off, the motion that I made, and it was on the recommendation of staff that with the board compensation to add into the budget process that there would be, compensation would automatically increase to mirror the annual adjustments of the North Carolina teachers, so we don't have to revisit this every couple of years.
Oh.
Ms. Justice?
Yeah, that's a, that's an excellent, I, yeah, wait a second, but now she was wanting to remove it. Can you clarify what's going on? She was.
So that that amendment did not get a second?
Oh, good.
So the, um, Ms. Bradford is, yes, could you repeat what you?
So going forward, board compensation would automatically increase to mirror annual adjustments to North Carolina teachers' salaries.
I'll second that.
Okay, so that is an amendment? Any discussion? Mr. Perry?
Um, I'm for that amendment. I I just wanted to ask a question about the overall, um, I guess I came on after Ms. Bradford made her motion, amendment motion. So I am definitely for what you're talking about, and I just wanted to know from a point of clarity, as far as approving this general budget tonight, that doesn't forego us having further discussion just about our cameras and all that other stuff down the line, does it? Uh, Dr. Barnes? About what cameras we should be where?
That's part of the capital outlay, I believe.
In your capital budget, there are, that we have created a five-year refresh for our cameras that is still currently in our in our capital budget request.
So I guess my question is, by approving this tonight, we are automatically going along with that. We can still have discussions about that later.
Before you discuss everything.
This is to, so according to Assembly, the recommendation is to approve the Superintendent's budget recommendation and county request. If approved, the budget resolution will be provided to the board for approval at the May regular meeting. So if we we send this forward, and this is just making sure that I'm correct, we send this forward, the resolution gets sent to our commissioners, and then there's a bit of conversation that happens, and they may send us back a different number, and then we have to discuss based off of what they are.
So tonight, we just.
This is sending this particular proposal forward to the commissioners, correct?
Thank you.
Correct.
Correct. And if we receive a number back from the commissioners, Ms. Sutton and I will take our budget, rework the capital, and resubmit something for your approval.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. And the attorneys had something to add.
Just one thing. I was gonna say, changes in the board stipend have to be in your in your budget ordinance. So you've got money left over this year. You're just gonna have to amend your, somebody asked me, Ashley asked me to look at this. Ms. Sutton asked me to look at this earlier today, the steps that you go through to change the board stipend. Essentially, it has to be in, you have to have an amendment to your your budget resolution, which I guess you just did.
Yeah.
A minute ago. And I was just gonna remind you, the the step up that you were just talking about, if that comes up again, to remember to modify your budget ordinance again.
Oh.
When we say automatic, I I wanted you to understand you still need to jump through that hoop of modifying the.
So we would need to be in our budget every year then if we chose to do it?
Yeah, i- if you if you get through, you know, half the way through the year, sometimes the General Assembly doesn't have it, they never have it by July first. So if it happens, you know what I mean, in November, whatever, then you just need to change your your budget resolution to reflect
Got it.
what the new amount's gonna be. That was it.
Dr. Merrick?
Yeah, I just want to sort of say for the for the public who might be saying, gosh, it seems selfish that the board would be looking at a raise for themselves when our schools are hurting as much as they are. The the vast majority of the quote-unquote increase is really just moving around from one account to the other. You know, twenty-five hundred dollars is typically given towards transportation every year. I live in Carolina Beach. I would use more than that, but now it's gonna be put into our salary, which means I'm gonna have to pay tax on it. So it's not like we're getting a huge bump. And in the end, I think we're gonna get a bump of about five hundred dollars a year. So I just, I want the public to know that.
Yes, it's moving money within the Board of Education, our actual account moving it to the stipend. And Ms. Bradford, and then?
Just just a word correction. It is not a salary. We are not salary people.
It's a stipend.
It's a stipend, and it's very, very low. And we've just added a couple of penny sues. There hasn't been a raise in it in eighteen years.
Dr. Barnes?
Just to clarify again, of the of the board stipend increase, twenty-two thousand of it, about seventy-five percent or more, is a zero-sum game. It doesn't touch kids. It doesn't touch schools. It doesn't, it doesn't, didn't force us to remove anything from schools.
Okay, so there is an amendment on the table. Ms. Bradford, I'm so sorry. Can you repeat the amendment one more time?
Can I get clarification just before? The amendment, or I'm sorry, the motion that you made, or you're getting ready to make, and you talk about the same raise as staff? Or would it be the classified, sometimes classified, certified staff, the the raise is different?
Teachers.
So would it just be an average, or would it?
Teachers.
I just wanted for clarification.
I believe she said teachers.
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. I missed that.
I did say North Carolina teachers.
Okay, sorry, I missed that. Okay.
Uh, Dr. Barnes?
Sorry, I want a clarification. If that's something we have to put into our budget request every year, is that something then they should just vote on every year?
You're gonna need to cha, you, you, when you change your budget resolution every time, you're gonna need to change it anyway. So, I mean, it it.
My recommendation would be just like we did during this budget process. It would be part of the increase, the recommendation, just like we say, we're we're estimating or we're forecasting a three percent increase for teachers, and then we would say, and then we're requesting a three percent increase. I think it would be part of the budget documentation every year, just like it was this year.
That's the belt and suspenders approach. And and it has the benefit of being simple because you've dealt with it at the beginning of the year.
Right.
So you you will already have a balanced budget. You'll have a way to do that. It's already built in.
Okay. So, Ashley, for clarification, are you saying we don't need this, or we do need this amendment?
I believe we do need this amendment just for that clarification of what the expectation would be for this year. And then this, so this wouldn't go into effect for July one. Is that correct? It would go into effect for the next year. We're just building it in into our procedures?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Point of order. Madam Chair, can we extend time for ten minutes?
Is that a motion?
I'll make a motion to extend time for ten minutes.
Second.
For ten? Okay, okay. I mean, I don't know if we need ten. Okay. Um, any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Passes six to one. Thank you, Mr. Wildebor, for adding that little dissenting vote.
Oh, that was.
All right. So, Ms. Bradford, could you restate your amendment?
Okay. So the vote we just had was to extend time, and it passed?
Yes.
Okay, just just checking. It's getting a little late.
Yes.
To approve, what'd you go?
She's.
Approve the budget to move forward.
We've already done that.
No, we haven't.
No, we haven't.
We haven't done it yet.
That's just it.
We've made a motion.
For finish.
Going forward, board compensation to automatically increase to mirror annual adjustments in North Carolina teachers' salaries.
Right. This is, we're voting on that amendment. Ms. Booley, will you call the roll?
Mr. Perry?
Aye.
Ms. Justice?
Yes.
Ms. Bradford?
Yes.
Dr. Merrick?
Yes.
Mr. Wildebor?
Aye.
Ms. Barnhart?
Yeah.
And Ms. Mason?
Yes. That passes six to one. Going back to the original motion, so
Discussion?
The amended motion. Ms. Barnhart?
I'm I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I I thought this was the discussion.
Discussion on the amended motion.
Which is the amended budget, let me guess.
Correct.
I want to start by saying I really appreciate the staff and the transparency in this whole process. I think it's been the smoothest transitions that we could have had. But I cannot in good faith adopt this budget tonight. I looked every single one of our county commissioners in their eyes when we were having budget discussions, saying that we would be pursuing every avenue of funding for our public schools. And a week ago, we turned down three point two million dollars. And in this budget is over one million dollars that that grant would have covered. And in addition, we just asked for a raise. I think it's hypocritical, and I appreciate all of the hard work that went into this, but I'm sorry, colleagues, I cannot approve this budget tonight.
Ms. Bradford?
And, Madam Chair, while I agree totally that we have overlooked, we threw out the baby with the bathwater. We overlooked that there are things in this budget that that pilot grant of three point two million dollars would have covered.
Would have.
And we are now gonna go to the county commission and ask them for that money to replace things that would have been covered under that pilot. And I think it's heinous, but I am still going to vote to pass the budget, whether the county commission let us have what we've asked for based on what happened last week and again tonight. We're just gonna have to wait and see how much grace we have with them. But I am going to, we've worked so hard to have this amazingly transparent budget that's balanced, and there's been no contention on it whatsoever, which in itself is just amazing. And so I will vote for it, but maybe I'll hold my nose while I do it. I don't know.
Mr. Wildebor?
And I'm just gonna quickly echo a thanks to Ms. Sutton, her staff, Dr. Barnes and his staff for all their hard work in putting this together, the Finance Committee for all their hard work in helping that. I think that, you know, hopefully the county commissioners will help us out as much as they can. We do need to do everything we can for our students, and that's what I'll be voting for.
Dr. Merrick?
I want to echo what my colleague here has said. I watched the budget process last year, and two things I noticed, that there seemed to be very poor communication between the Superintendent and the board. Mostly, when I looked at the board, they were looking at their papers going, what am I looking at? What Ms. Sutton and Dr. Barnes have been able to bring to us was clear. It was concise, and look how much faster we got it done. I really, I can't thank you enough. I mean, that's seriously good governance. Thank you.
Ms. Justice?
I echo everyone else here. You guys have done a fantastic job. I've been doing this to, since two thousand and eighteen. I've actually worked in other districts and watched the sausage being made. I was off the board for a couple of years, but I was still watching very closely. And this has been the smoothest budget process I have ever witnessed, and most of it is because of transparency, because of professionalism. As far as speaking to the county commissioners, we should be as a unit together on this. We shouldn't bring up facts that aren't evident to assume that we walked away from a million dollars. We don't know. dollars, we don't know that because it is an assumption. We haven't had any figures given to us, all this stuff has been thrown at us the last week or so. We need to move on from this and focus on getting the budget passed. And as far as compensation, it probably works out, it's sort of like teaching. The amount of work we put into this, maybe we get a quarter an hour some days. It's really sad that some people don't understand that this should not be a position for privilege, and people that would spend that amount of time in their personal life, in order to do that work for so little compensation, have to be some kind of privileged person in society. One, as far as their income levels goes, you might be retired, have a spouse that can support you, you know, still work and kill yourself because you're young enough to be able to do that, but being on the Board is hard work, this is not a lot of money we're asking for, so to say that we, for anybody to refuse that, isn't being honest with what's going on here. We need to encourage people to run and be part of our government agencies. That's one of the reasons I do believe that the county commissioners actually gave themselves an 83% raise a couple of years ago, because it causes people to be, because they have just as much work, I don't think they have any more than we have, we have a lot of work, and we don't get compensated near as well. So, you know, I want to encourage people to run for office, and I also want to encourage people that are in positions to assist them to do that, to be fair to everybody equally.
Mr. Perry?
I just want to thank Dr. Barnes, all staff, everybody for doing this budget, great job. I wish I could have gone to a few more of those budget workshops, but I know I wasn't there, because I am one of those people who actually asks us to work, and the little bit of compensation that we get now compared to how many hours you put into this, I mean, we are making way less than minimum wage, so we're not asking for much. So I fully support the budget as is, and let's do it.
All right, so there is an amended motion to approve the budget with those changes that Ms. Bradford had noted. Ms. Bowie, will you call the roll?
Ms. Bradford?
Yes.
Dr. Merrick?
Yes.
Mr. Wildebor?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Justice?
Yes.
Ms. Barnhart?
No.
And Ms. Mason?
Yes.
That passes six to one. Moving on, board, ethics training for Board members, this was brought to our attention by Ms. Barnhart. I know that some of us were able to attend ethics training a couple of months ago, but there are some that have not yet had it according to policy. We do need to make sure that everyone has that, and so I believe this was a request to ask the attorneys and for us to approve the attorneys doing that ethics training. Ms. Bradford, did you have something?
I move to approve that we have our Board attorneys give us ethic training, ethics training.
Okay.
Second?
All right. And we will have to sit down and talk about the logistics of all of that. All right, any further discussion? Hearing none? Oh? So the individuals that still remain are Ms. Bradford, and Ms. Barnhart, and Ms. Justice. So.
Ms. Chair?
Yes, Ms. Barnhart.
The only point of clarity I know, it says in policy, the people coming on have a 12-hour training, and then we have an annual too, so I don't know if, how much delineation there needs to be, but per policy, it was just that you have to approve the vendors who we accept trainings by, so this was just a suggestion to say, can we do this? And I wanted to bring it before the Board.
Ms. Justice?
12 hours, I can remember going through the initial training in 2018, it certainly wasn't 12 hours, but on the other hand, since I already have had the initial training, maybe that would qualify me for the two hours.
I don't, I don't know if that.
I'm just saying we could look into that, but I don't think, 12 hours is...
Well, NCSBA, when we went to the training, was two full days.
Really?
Yes.
They've changed as well, thank you.
So, all right, there is, yes, Ms. Bradford.
So how would that work if two of us need two hours and one of us needs 12 hours? How would that work?
That is logistical.
I think we can meet your needs for two hours or 12 hours, that we put on lots of CLEs along the way, it's not a big deal.
That's every two years, by the way, the 12 hours.
Oh, okay.
According to the School Board Association, it's every 12 o'clock hours in a two-year period.
Quote of ethics, with ethics training. So total of 12 over two years.
But right, with two hours of ethics training.
Two hours of ethics training. All right, so there is a motion to have our attorneys do the ethics training for our remaining three Board members. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes seven to zero. Letter to NCDPI, Ms. Barnhart.
Thank you, Madam Chair, this was brought before the Legislative Committee, and we had given feedback. I had thank you to my colleague to the right to help write this letter. After the Legislative Committee, we, I have reached out again to my colleague specifically in paragraph two, after concurring with him, he agreed with the written text, and so what this letter is, is to address Superintendent Mo Green, and a few of us had the opportunity to speak with him last night, and this was one of the topics of discussion that came up with our networking event, specifically in regards to the Power School breach and as we transition over to Infinite Campus, different protections that we as the state at DPI can take, and steps that we can ensure data privacy as we move forward. So my recommendation after conferring with colleagues would be to adopt this letter of support, and then further send it to the Office of Superintendent Mo Green.
Second?
And if I might, we will be changing the date on that, correct?
Absolutely.
Because we will adopt the letter to reflect the date as today, as today.
Wait a second, can we wait, tell people?
Wait a second, maybe.
It's getting late, y'all.
Dr. Merrick?
I would cede to Mr. Perry, who had his hand up before me.
Okay, Mr. Perry?
I just want to say, I have a pleasure working with Ms. Barnhart on this, she shares her concern about keeping our students' data private in the future. What happened with Power School must never happen again, so we have to work as hard as we can with state officials and within our own IT department to make sure that happens, so, thank you.
Okay, and Dr. Merrick?
Yeah, the problem I have with the letter is that, and I understand the intent, and I feel for the intent, about keeping our students' private information on a local network. It sounds like a good idea, because, you know, we got burned by Power Schools. My concern is that, you know, and we've heard it through a couple of different consultants saying that putting it in the cloud, those companies have much, much more robust defenses than we would ever be able to have locally.
That's probably true.
And I, you know, I agree with my colleague who has said, well, there's more people that want to hack into that cloud, but it only takes one, and if our local networks are not strong enough, I hate to think, and then it would all be on us, and we would carry the liability. We could not, we could not give that liability over to Infinite Campus, we would have to accept it ourselves, and I think that's another huge issue, so I can't support it as is.
Ms. Justice?
All right, and then there's state law too, as far as sharing information with federal laws, and state law and federal law always supersedes whatever we come up with. So at this point, it's a nice letter, but we can't, do we really have any teeth behind it in reality, when the state, what I just described? So I think I might object also, not personally, I think was a good plan, but in all honesty, right now, we don't even know what our information is being done with by the federal government and the state, you know, yeah, Education Department, so we're living in very scary times.
And if I might add, I understand what my colleague is saying to the further right of me, but I also appreciate what my colleague next to me is saying, in that using our voice, we can possibly lead the state of North Carolina to push for NCDPI to have more accountability and to protect our students and to protect their data. And so I support the letter for sure. Mr. Wildebor?
And I'm just going to, we have about 20 minutes left in our time, and so I'm going to call the question.
Second?
It is 8:19.
We have a closed session, so.
Yes, all right, so there is a motion to, well, we just had to call the question, so we have to vote on that first. That is ending discussion, we're voting on ending discussion about the NCDPI letter. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes seven to zero. Now there is a motion to approve the NCDPI letter with the date change. Ms. Bowie, will you call the roll?
Ms. Bradford?
Yes.
Dr. Merrick?
No.
Mr. Wildebor?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Justice?
I'm going to say yes, but remember the state and the federal government.
Ayes.
Ms. Barnhart?
Yes.
And Ms. Mason?
Yes, that passes six to one. Moving forward, we have the New Hanover County Schools Employee Performance Bonus Plan Ad-hoc Committee. Mr. Perry, I believe, has talked about this, we've talked about this a lot, so, Mr. Perry?
I'll just summarize for the audience, this would be a performance bonus that's over and above, beyond our employees' salary and wages, this is not meant to replace. We've discussed this in length, this would be a committee on how to do that fairly, to come up with a comprehensive plan. We are certainly, this would be an advisory committee, reporting to the full Board, and obviously, once we come up with a full plan, then we can move, you know, for the Board approving it, and then hopefully seeking the funding that we need in order to give this advantage to our great employees here at New Hanover County Schools. And I just want to say, if we are passed today, I would like to have, to make sure that Mr. Wildebor knows that I am for having an initial introductory meeting where the people that are on the list, the current specified people, would then nominate other people to join us for our first real work session together, so.
All right, is there a motion?
The motion that we approve, the Ad-hoc Committee.
Right, is there a second?
Also a second.
Okay, discussion, we have five minutes total for this, is there discussion? Ms. Bradford, and then Ms. Justice?
I really want to increase teacher pay. I will vote no, because I don't think that at this time we need another committee. I think we need to focus on the tasks at hand, and this will just be distraction at this point. I'm not saying I would not vote for it next year, or in six months, but I can't, I cannot in good conscience vote for this at this time. We have a robust meeting schedule now, and we have Board members who don't make the meetings, and I just cannot support it.
Okay, Ms. Justice?
Agreed with Ms. Bradford, our teachers don't even get enough, our teacher assistance, nobody, none of our educators are getting enough in this district, and also, you're right about the full schedule about the committees, but beyond that, educators don't work in competition. They work collaboratively, that's the way, that's where you get your best outcomes, that's a fact, they've done tons of studies on this. Merit pay is not effective. You can show me, I would like to see some real studies that show that it is, because it has proven not to be. So I, while I think the intent is, in fact, I know the intent is really good, this isn't the business world, this is education, and we need to be lifting everybody up, not competing, in fact, they're going to do it anyway, and I would like to see this, you know, if you want to discuss it further down the line, I don't know if I'll ever agree with it, because I do believe education is such a collaborative process, but this year definitely is not good between the fact we don't have enough money, as it is, it's just, and the committee meeting is just getting out of hand, I'd like to have a committee or two, we can't, that's my take.
Okay, all right, Ms. Bowie? Oh, I'm so sorry, Dr. Merrick?
I had, I'm going to come back over here.
Sorry, Dr. Merrick?
I take all the comments to heart, I do. I admit that it's going to be a hard job. I also think that anything we can do to support teachers more than we are doing right now should be taken up, and maybe the committee will say, it's not just for one teacher, maybe it's for a whole department, and spread some money around. If any of us do not want to sit on that committee, I think it's fine to bow out, but I think there are people here who are willing to sit on that committee. And, you know, the money does not have to come from the endowment or from the county, you know, there could be corporate sponsors for this, there's ways that it could be done, I'm not saying it's going to be easy, the metric for deciding is going to be really a tough one, but I'll support you, Mr. Perry.
Thank you.
Mr. Wildebor?
And I appreciate Mr. Perry saying that, you know, my biggest thing is, we need, if we're going to do something like this, we need to have the people that are in the classrooms, in the schools, to be part of that team, and I think he said.
I completely agree.
Okay.
We need employee buy-in, or this isn't going to work.
Oh, right. Okay, Ms. Bowie, will you call the roll?
Ms. Bradford?
No.
Dr. Merrick?
Yes.
Mr. Wildebor?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Justice?
No.
Ms. Barnhart?
Yes.
And Ms. Mason?
Yes.
That passes five to two. All right, we have no new business, so I will, I will entertain a motion to go into closed session pursuant to General Statute 143-318.111C for the following purposes: to prevent the disclosure of information that is privileged or confidential pursuant to General Statute 115C-402, and not considered a public record within the meaning of Chapter 132 of the General Statutes; to prevent the disclosure of student records rendered confidential under the family educational rights; to consult with an attorney in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege between the attorney and the Board; and to consider the qualifications, competence, performance, character, fitness, conditions of appointment, or conditions of initial employment of an individual employed or considered for employment within the school system; or to hear or investigate a complaint, charge, or grievance by or against any individual employee.
So moved.
Those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, any opposed? We are in closed.
[inaudible]
We are back and open.
I know that we adjourned.
I know that we accept the personnel report.
Second.
All right, there's a motion to approve the personnel report.
Oh, 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 oh.
All those in favor, sign if you want. Any discussion?
Nope.
Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? That passes seven zero. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Oh wait, crap, I gotta do announcements. I'm so sorry. Let me read them quickly. Policy committee will meet Wednesday, April ninth, 2025 at ten a.m. At the Board of Ed Center. General public will have the option to review remotely on YouTube. Board of Education will hold a gender review meeting on Tuesday, April twenty ninth, at two p.m. At the Board of Education Center. General public will have the option to view remotely on YouTube. Board of Education will hold the May regular board meeting on Tuesday, May sixth, at five p.m. Board of Education Center. General public will have the option to view remotely on New Hanover County Schools TV YouTube. I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, any opposed? We are adjourned. Sir?